You guys hear me?
Hello.
Hi.
Hang all here.
Hi all.
Just hello Carl.
Hello, everybody.
Waiting on Barry, is that who we're waiting on?
Yeah, no Barry.
Hey. Alrighty. Time to get this rolling now, just lost my uh. My script. Buried it in here, hold on. How did I just do that? Bingo, alrighty. Um, we are using Zoom. For this meeting, which allows for the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee, the chair can request public members to provide their names. For purposes of keeping accurate minutes, attendees must register to participate. The registration link is unique to each meeting, attendees will join in listening mode, they can raise their hand in the button if they wish to speak, the chair will call on those who have raised their hands. In order that they are raised, any questions should be directed through the chair. As a preliminary matter. Um, Chair and staff will permit to confirm that all members and persons are anticipated in the present and can hear me in this meeting. Um, Members, please uh respond on the affirmative as I call your name. Joe Topham.
Present.
Nat Lowell.
Here.
Don Trudell.
Here.
Mary Rector.
Here.
Um, and for alternates, we got Carl Fortress.
Here.
Stephen Welch.
Here.
Um, Abby, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Alright, great, and for staff, we have Megan Trudell, Louise Snell.
Here, here.
Great. Thank you. Um. I think that's it. So, welcome to a planning board meeting, everyone, Monday, July tenth. The first meeting of the Snell era. Um. Alright, so. We're gonna approve the agenda.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Alright, that was made by Barry, seconded by Joe.
Yep.
Great, uh Barry.
Hi.
Yo.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that's unanimous, uh. Um, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Uh huh.
Any changes, edits?
No, mo- motion to approve the June twelfth minutes is submitted.
I'll second that.
Um, made by Barry, seconded by Joe again, uh Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Don.
Hi, and also, do we have to make a motion to continue the June eighth meeting uh minutes until the August meeting? I see you note there, I don't know if we need to make that official or not.
Yeah.
Since it's on the agenda, I don't know.
Okay. Do we have to do that? Well, let's finish up with this one.
If you could, that would be great.
Okay. Um.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, motion to continue the June eighth minutes to the next meeting, or table. Which would be appropriate.
Great, second.
Alright, made by Barry, seconded by John, Barry.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um. On to second dwellings. Uh, anyone have a question, anyone need one pulled out, or are we gonna just vote them all? Uh huh. Okay. We'll entertain a motion, please.
I'm gonna make a motion at this point, we approve all the second dwellings with any findings or contingencies that that are denoted in our files at this point. And that's for the four listed on the page, do you want to read those off, Dave, just?
Oh, oh yeah, oh, so we've got uh the poems at sixty-three um Scunsit Street, got Tamara Wing at fifty-two West Chester. Marshall Coil at sixty-one Pochek and Karen John Rogers at thirty-two Lyons Lake.
And that is my motion as submitted.
Second.
Right, made by Barry, seconded by Nat, uh Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Onto the ANRs, um. We're gonna hold uh, hold the three out for the public hearing, those three would be uh. Uh, one fifty-six and one fifty-eight Cliff Road, uh Real Keeper LLC at ten Surfside Drive. Sixty-eight Surfside, I'm sorry, sixty-eight Fairgrounds Road and um ten Green Meadows. So, uh, I would look for a motion that would include um. The town of Nantucket and Madakishan Valley Road and Wee Weeder Avenue, uh Egan at thirteen Pinecrest. And Egan and eleven Pinecrest, Marshall. Coil. At sixty-one Pochek, uh. The Hinckley Lane, Nantucket Trust at six Hinckley Lane, Nantucket Land Bank seven Nobdier Farm Road, um. TRS Angels Roost at eight Silver Street, Hooper Farm Road, Nominee Trust at forty-four Hooper Farm Road. The Rainamows at two Eli Place, Harold Brothers LLC at two, four, and six Highlands Avenue. Uh, one fifty-six Cliff Road. And one fifty-six and one fifty-eight Cliff.
We're holding that one.
We're, yeah, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, so. Yes, so we're holding both though, so we stop at the Harold Brothers Realty.
Yeah.
Correct.
Alright. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we endorse the A and Rs that you've just written off at this point.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Barry, seconded by John, Barry.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Alright.
And I'm an I as well, so that's unanimous. Um. Onward to previous plans. Um, we've got sixty and sixty-two Wall Street.
Got it.
Megan, would you like to?
Um, I don't see Lisa. On the call, um, but this was continued from last month. If you recall, I I know Catherine had sent around the minutes from those prior meetings, um. It was just a driveway where the material was installed incorrectly that normally we wouldn't um even bring to your attention, but because there was such a lengthy discussion about it as a part of the approval. Um, we needed to bring it back to the board to to see how to proceed, so I think we left the last meeting at you all wanted to do drive fives, oh, here's Lisa, hold on, let me bring her over.
Yeah.
Um, so that's where we left things, I think you all wanted to to go do a a drive-by site, and I just brought Lisa over.
Uh huh.
Hi Lisa. Hi.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
You're good, so uh.
I'm a stand-in for Elizabeth O'Rourke, who is on vacation.
Ah, okay. Um, do you have anything to add for us, or?
No, I, again, I think um, uh, you know, the 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 thought, the original approval was for Belgian Block, I believe. And then when they did the work, they decided that the that they wanted to use the um the shell instead. Um, and I think it's sort of, I think it's just the change in material.
Okay. Um, Nat?
Yeah, so, let's just circle back to the last meeting and the whole thing with the. Grass growing through. Contraptions there, those cement things and all that was part of this, so I took a ride down there. I took pictures of everything around it, including the one after this property. And the other property that's there is, Lisa, the 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 larger driveway.
Yep.
And. So, I I I, hi- his, and there's one, the the, and the one directly across from this driveway application. Has a. I I don't like to call it an apron, because the road is not paved, so it's sort of like a. Like a, I don't even know what the word is for these. Things they have, but they look good and it delineates. The driveway from the road without it being this sort of uh island of nothing like we would do. If it was paved. I like that, I like the one they have at the other house. And I like the one at the neighbors towards, you know, going towards Bayland Beach Road, I don't know what the number is, but that, the one on the left has the same thing, it has like a. Like a sort of a path of either Belgian Block or 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 cobblestones.
Yeah, I think the main house has.
Does. It has like a, a, an apron, but it's not the way we asked for them to be done, Lisa, when it's paved, it's just a sort of a. A sidewalk-like kind of thing, that just goes straight across. I think that that's what we should do. With the, with the one that we're actually voting on tonight, is make, have them build a, I talked to the owner, I talked to her on the phone three weeks ago. To build a similar. You know, three feet wide or whatever they are across. At the appropriate location. At the beginning of that. You know, two car garage, whatever that is, that that area that we're, we're discussing. It it gotta have something at the beginning of it, like the others, and I think that that is the, is a good compromise to this whole. Infusion about what we originally approved and not realizing that what was the surrounding. You know, properties and the issue with water and backing in and making it have to be a perfect parking job to make those work, that that's unnecessary. So I think they should just come up with a, they can use either material, it doesn't matter to me personally, as far as one member here, I'm just saying. Mimic what's across the street or their. Or their other house.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be my comment at the moment, let everyone else speak, I'm just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Nat. Uh, John?
I'll just kind of review, we've had uh the uh original meeting, uh this was discussed in length. We had uh the last meeting, it was sort of discussed in length, and the the highlight is um. Really, we spent a considerable amount of time for whatever reasons, uh, we all had our opinion about it, we gave recommendations, and it was kind of a blatant. Uh, we're not going to do what the board um approved, designed, accepted, after considerable discussion. So, uh, not that we can't come to a compromise somewhere, but uh it just feels like a lot of time has been wasted on a decision that ultimately is almost a. You know, for better uh terms, slap in the face, why are we given a decision and only to have it not um built according to our our thoughts and and discussions and. And ultimate uh decision, so um. You know, maybe if we were going to have two curb cuts and two driveways, we would have insisted on a different design with. One with a larger parking for both sets, and maybe turn driveway, you know, you know, for that garage, instead of a straight-in driveway. I mean, there's a lot of different things that could have taken place, uh but being as it was, we made those recommendations based on other curb cuts, and I think it just. It it sets a bad precedent, that we make a decision, spend a lot of time, and then only to have the homeowner uh. Go, for whatever reason, if it was a mistake, an honest mistake, a miscalculation, a landscaper, for whatever reason it was, it's still not what we approved, so I just think it's a bad precedent.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Um. I went down, I I met with Elizabeth, I went down and we walked it, um, I, you know, I, John's comments, um. Are real, a- and and I think in some sense, you know, it's unfortunate, but um. I think that we can find a happy median here, um, I think that that the edges of that driveway. Need to be defined as well, just to give it a a better look, instead of just like this sprawling amount of white shell coming in on the driveway. So if the edges could be defined, and then as well as what Nat said, um, not a full apron, it's almost like a mini speed bump or something that they've. And it's on properties down there where it's just um, it's just Belgian Block, and I think that it gives it a little more definition and helps. The shell from washing out into the road and um is a better look, so I I would be agreeable to something like that, um. Uh, you know, I'm I'm not happy how we got here, but um. I think that 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 this is a workable solution, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I agree with John in some ways, I've kind of uh, we had an approval in place. But I do like Nat's suggestion of somewhere, like, you know, adding like a little hump of Belgian Block, you know, kind of define that area, kind of. Keep that shelf in Washington, washing into the uh, you know, dirt road. It it may be all the neighborhood will get together and it'll be a Shell Road or something like that, I mean, but I think this is a a good solution to a. You know, however we got here, it's not great, but you know, I think that's a compromise we can all make. So, thanks.
Um, so to staff, um, how would we proceed here, continue and ask for a. An updated plan for the driveway? Or?
I think you can specify what you're looking for, and then they can submit that to staff to sign off, um, and we'll, we'll sign off on the permit once it's constructed. But I don't think you need to continue to see a plan, I think if you specify what it is that you need, um, staff can review and sign off on that plan once it's submitted.
Alright, thank you, Megan, Lisa, are you pretty clear on what?
Yeah, oh, I'm pretty clear, I mean, and I'm sorry, I wasn't. Involved in this whole process, and um, but I can certainly relay the information back to Elizabeth. Um, and you know, I apologize that there was some miscommunication about the material and. I think it was one thing got approved by the HCC, and the other thing got approved by you guys, and they did the HCC approval, and I I'm not exactly sure what the mix-up is, but I think your, it's a great compromise and. I will explain it to her or Kim, who I thought was gonna be on the call, but she obviously isn't, and we'll get a revised drawing to the planning board. For, to the staff.
Uh huh.
And Kim just popped on and popped off, so I think she's having connectivity issues.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Lisa, and and we're not looking to place blame, it's just an unfortunate situation.
Yeah, I know, they happen. Thank you.
Uh huh. So, I would, unless there's any other comment. I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna make a motion to. I guess I would say, allow staff to endorse. The conceptual. Suggestion we had with the applicant to um. Mimic the. Adjacent driveway. Or, and the one across from it, either one, you know, in that same manner. Delineating the entrance from the road, as Joe suggested, said better than me. It's sort of doing three different things, really, and that's important, and that's, I think that that's consistent. So that would be my motion to have staff uh approve this, you know, sign off on this when they. Bring that plan.
I'll second that.
Great, uh, motion made by Nat, seconded by Joe, Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Don.
Uh, I'm going to vote nay on that.
Alright, and I'm an I, so. Four to one.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later.
Okay, uh, on to ten Industry Road, uh, Megan, do I need to appoint someone on this or no, four is enough?
It's a minor mod, Leslie, can you remind me, can we activate on minor mods, I don't think we do.
Uh huh.
You don't need to, but you do need to make the finding that it doesn't require a public hearing.
Alright.
Which is, if you read it just as it is in the staff report.
Okie dokie, well, for the person making the motion needs to read that, correct?
Right, yes.
Alrighty, uh, who do we have representing this?
Uh, this is Leo, is representing this application.
Great. Hi Leo, welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Uh.
Yes.
Yeah, before we proceed, let let's just clear up the administrative aspect at this point, I'm just gonna make a motion at this point that this is gonna be uh require a minor modification at this point. Um. Pure and simple.
Okay. I have a second on that?
Second.
Alrighty, uh Barry made the motion, that seconded Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Thank you. Um, oh, and by the way, John, I mean, uh, Joe Topham is recused on this. Right? Right, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Um. Great, okay, I'm sorry for that delay, Leo. Floor is yours.
Well, uh, just gonna say that probably most of you realize now that uh the site is being shared between Rees Trucking and Strang Excavation. And uh it just became necessary to add a second scale uh for bookkeeping and everything else, because uh they both have vehicles coming in and needed to be weighed. Uh, so hence the addition of an additional scale, same scale that's there right now. Uh. We're gonna add some additional paving to allow the trucks, some of which would be eighteen-wheelers, to get onto the scale itself and and uh. Enter and exit off the scale without any problems. Uh, it's that simple, they just needed a second scale.
Uh huh. Great, thank you, Leo. Questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion at this point that we accept the application as submitted, uh, which will uh allow them to put a new scale into place with all the other previous um. Conditions to remain in effect.
Um. Just to, can I just? Check, do we have to close this?
No public hearing.
No, it's not a public hearing, but you have to make, you have to make the specific finding that the request does not materially affect the findings and conclusions upon which the previous decisions were based, and therefore shall be allowed without a public hearing.
And I'll I'll include that in my, in my motion.
Better. And I'll second, I'll second all that, thank you very much, Megan.
That's great. Um. Motion made by Barry, seconded by Nat. Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Um. Great, all set, thank you, Leo.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, okay, we're moving on to Clay Street subdivision, um. Meg?
Um, so for this one, it's pursuant to the original subdivision decision, there is a deadline. For the planning board to request that the select board um request rights in Clay Street, so that deadline is approaching, and we are asking that the board formally make that request to the select board. Um, so that the, we can get the easement and rights in Clay Street. And to be clear, not so anything will be constructed immediately, but to allow for. Potential connections in the future perhaps, or not, uh, but the key thing is to, we need to move forward with this now.
Can I just add something to check with Leslie on this? Megan, this is before, I think this is before you were here, I'm not sure, but wasn't it also, Leslie, so they don't have anything constructed? In a certain area? So it's left unconstructed on that side, on the Richmond side? I believe that was part of it.
So part of Clay Street is constructed as a gravel road, and then.
I meant structures, I didn't mean the road part, I meant like physical, anything in it, built in it, that's what I was referring to.
Well, nothing's built in it now, I I don't have the decision handy at the moment, sorry, but nothing's built in it now. And um if the town doesn't proceed with accepting an easement, then um. Zoner could could do whatever they want to do in the area.
Uh huh.
So, so it's doing what I said, it's just, we have to exercise this to get that to happen.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's all that really matters here, we we just can't let the next generation have to fix this. Got it.
Barry.
Yeah, so, Ms. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion at this point that we do.
Hold off one second, Barry, I think.
Absolutely, but I I am gonna say one, something really quick. I I hope the board will vote in favor of this, because this is a very vital thing for us to be able to do. To make the uh, to make the subdivision work uh into the future, and uh just as long as we're all clear too. This doesn't necessarily always have to be a roadway structure, although we may want to have that ability. Uh, but at a minimum pedestrian ease and will work fine, so I'm really encouraging the board to to want to make this happen. And hopefully you'll come back.
Very good points, Barry, I just, I wa- I only held you up because Joe had his hand up.
Yeah, no, no problem.
I just want to clarify, this is the. Lot, and there's boats to the left-hand side as you're driving off. The road, is that correct? Yeah, alright, so I I viewed the right location, I just uh felt like I was intruding, but I'm fine with it.
No, I think like Barry said, it's important to keep the options open, I don't think there's any plans right now, but um to let this go by would be a shame, Leslie.
Can I just add, since um Joe brought up the boats, um, because I think a lot of you were copied on an email that you may or may not have read yet, um, but the plus staff did. Uh, some research, did some investigating, and an enforcement order was issued for that property for the boat storage and the other things that are happening on that site.
Uh huh. Perfect. Yep. Barry.
So, Mr. D, so there we go again, yeah, um, I saw, I'd like to make a motion at this point that the board formally makes a request to the select board for an easement for the rights in Clay Street.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead, Joe.
No, you can, that, there you go.
Made, made by Barry, and we'll give it to the elder statesman, Nathaniel.
Joe's deer in the background has got me confused tonight.
Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi, thank you for calling me deer, Nat.
Bye.
Alright, and I'm an I as well. It's unanimous. Thank you, guys, on to public hearings. Um, we've got a few continued items here, Acme Island LLC, um, Ac offices. Is continued to the August meeting, um. As well as twenty-one Brewster Road will be continued. Is continued to the August meeting, um, as well as Twenty-One Brewster Road will be continued to the August meeting. So, um, we are on to Forty Old South Road LLC, Twenty-A and Twenty-B Forest Ave.
Can you just take a quick motion to continue those two, if you don't mind?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Yeah, all right, moved by Barry, seconded by Nat, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, back on to Forty Old South Road LLC, do we have Art on?
Yep, let me bring Art and Arthur over.
Hi, the two Arthurs. Art, you, you wanna start in?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, just to avoid any confusion, and you've called this out as being. Forty Old South Road LLC, it is not, it is Forty OSR LLC. Forty Old South Road LLC is the adjacent property. That, uh, is, has been before you recently and was recently approved for the, uh, for the Thai restaurant. Uh, originally, the entire property was Forty Old South Road, and it was subdivided, and. Uh, the, uh, group that owns, uh, Two and Two-B Forest Avenue, as it's now called. Was originally formed when the whole property was a single parcel, and, and it was named Forty OSR LLC. Uh, so I just wanted to make that, uh, clarification, just so that the unfortunate, uh. Similarity of the, of the name, uh, uh, that, that they chose doesn't, doesn't further confuse anybody with regard to the situation. I don't think it matters, but I just want everybody to know that this is in fact, a different property, and I think some of the neighbors at one point had commented that it was the same applicant. Because it's not. Uh, in any event, uh, since the last meeting, as the update in the staff report indicates. We've submitted quite a bit of additional material, uh, dealing with, uh, drainage. Uh, lighting, uh, other, other engineering issues, increased open space. And, uh, for there to be no parking sign along the frontage on, uh, Forest Avenue. And, um, there are indeed, uh, a few more comments from Ed Pesci. Uh, all of which are, as is always the case with Ed, uh, pertinent and appropriate. We would like to suggest that the only remaining issues on this are, first of all. Certificate of Water Quality Compliance, which we'll have to obtain in any event. Uh, and the engineering, uh, really relatively minor engineering issues. All of which will be shown on the final plans that we will have to have before we can, uh, get a building permit or start construction on the project. Uh, and what we would like to request would be that the board, uh, after you hear everything that will be said tonight. Uh, close the hearing, uh, with a provision that, uh, uh, prior to the issuance of any building permit. Plans addressing all these issues, as well as the certificate of water quality compliance. Uh, will have been submitted to the planning staff for review and, uh, uh, their sign off, uh, prior to the, uh, issuance of the permit. So with that, I would turn it over to the board to ask any questions of us, uh, of, uh, of, of, to be answered by Art or me. And, uh, obviously, any further discussion we need to have. Thanks.
Thank you, Arthur. Board members? Um, uh, Megan or Leslie, so. Um, if we do that, I don't have a problem doing that, if the rest of the board doesn't, but that, those plans would go to Ed, right? And then come back before, okay, perfect. Um, this is a public meeting, correct, public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Um, and it, it remains open from last week, right?
Yes, and Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, I just want to, just because we're on a new, new monthly meeting. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion on this in past meetings, so this isn't just the first and original. So if we're a little quiet waiting for any other, um, comments from the, uh, public. It's only because we've had considerable discussions already, and I think, uh, the applicants have been, uh, forthright, and they've, um. Been open to our suggestions and changes that we've, uh, made and, and, uh, so we're very comfortable with a lot of the. Um, changes that they've made, so I just wanted to note that for the record for the public that are just, uh, tuning in for the first time, thank you.
Thank you, John, uh, is there anyone in the public with their hands up, Megan?
Hi, Deborah Holgate.
Okay. Hi Deborah, welcome.
Hi, I think I just unmuted myself.
That's good, we can hear you.
Good, I'm just surprised at the request, um. By Arthur Reed to go forward without the plans being submitted. Um, and I think if that's, if I'm understanding correctly, that means not the new plans for the apartments, not the plans for the parking garage. And so that's, that's just my question.
I, Deborah, I think that, that, that we, that all the plans have been seen, I think that the only. The only question is the more, um, specific plans for the parking garage, um.
At last month's meeting, it was alluded that there were. Six two-bedroom apartments, but yet the plans that are in your packet have four three-bedroom apartments. Nothing's been updated in your packet.
Um, Arthur or, or Art?
The, just as far as the parking's concerned, it would equal twelve, so whether the breakdown or composition is. Six two-bedrooms or three, four bedrooms, it's still twelve bedrooms, so the, the parking calculation for that would be, remain the same. Irrespective of how it was allocated, so just from the staff level, that's, um, our interpretation of that, but maybe. Arthur could let you know what the breakdown is.
And I don't have that in front of me, Art, do you have that?
I would defer to Matt, I thought he was gonna be on the meeting for the. The architectural side of things.
I'm here.
Oh, hey Matt, welcome.
Hey, how are you? So, yeah, um, so we're, I think ultimately we're looking to do, uh, three two-bedrooms, but. Uh, given the modular construction, we're still working through some of the layouts, but that is, that is our intent. But our understanding is that the bedroom count, it will not change, we won't increase the number of bedrooms from. Uh, what's represented on the current set of plans, but we are planning to, to reconfigure, um, accordingly.
Does that answer your question, Deborah?
Well, it doesn't, it confuses me a little bit more, because the original plans say twelve bedrooms, and I believe I just heard him say. Six bedrooms, the other question that I have has to do with the parking. And somewhere in a very long document there, it said shared parking with Forty Old South Road. But yet Forty South, Old South Road doesn't have any extra parking. To share with two forests, as far as I've heard. So I'd like to address that question.
If I could, uh, respond through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, there is not shared parking, and we, we went through that at the, uh, last meeting, uh, it's not shared parking, it's shared access. Uh, including the driveway access and, uh, uh, sidewalk and footpath access as shown on the plans. But the parking, uh, uh, is separate for the two parcels, and as I suggested at that time. I don't think we're going to be challenging their, uh, patrons who are, uh. Uh, who happen to be in one of our spaces or vice versa, but we do want to keep it separate, uh, rather than, uh. Have it be of any type of formal shared parking.
No, I'm hesitant to leave my Zoom and go find your document that's in the packet, but it does say shared space with Forty Old South.
I saw what, what Arthur represented, so I'm not sure.
Nat, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, John.
Well, there, there, in the previous discussions we had, um, it may have been confused. Because the applicants individually have always maintained the proper parking and required spaces. Uh, the comments were, when we were talking about the ac- accessibility to allow, um, potentially for the future to open up. And there was also discussion about, uh, you know, just similar to the Mid Island, when you have a business next to a business. Uh, we were going to use a communal type, um, you know, non-formal agreement, but. Uh, when somebody's running in for a bagel on one side and they happen to be parking on the other, it doesn't create a, uh, a violation. Um, it's more of a friendly, you know, you can park here, just as we do with the Stop and Shop, and we go to a restaurant or Island Kitchen, somebody parks there. Um, you know, it's, it's not, uh, formally written that we need to formally discuss, because on its own merit. Each applicant has the required parking that we're approving, so, uh, there was discussions, Deb, you are correct, we, you've noted this, but. I don't believe it was required in writing, something that we demanded as the planning board, because we were accepting of, um, how they designed it.
Okay, I just want my comments noted, and I'd have to go back and find what I read that was a updated, uh. Um, piece of paper that I saw in the hundred and twenty page. Um, but that's it, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you Deborah, we, we hear you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, too, if I could clarify, I, I, uh, just want to be clear about the, uh, the number of bedrooms wouldn't change, it would be six. Uh, two bedrooms, I may have said.
Okay.
Three, but I was thinking three per, per side, where the, uh, structure is, is laid out, so.
But it, but regardless, it adds up to twelve bedrooms.
Exactly, exactly.
Or how we, how we dice it up, which has the same parking requirements.
Correct.
Well, perfect, thank you, Matt.
And we have Sandra London.
Great, hi Sandra, welcome. You're muted, Sandra.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay, um, I have one question that isn't clear to me, is there any dining that is in the outdoors? Um, I can see this covered space, but I don't know if there's windows in front of it or not windows in front of it. Um, and it appears that there are tables in that area. I don't know if it's a patio outdoors or not a patio outdoors, because, uh, obviously. Covered space would be more agreeable to me than outdoor patio space.
All right, um, uh, I, it's my understanding patio, but I'll let Matt. Um, confirm that.
Yeah, currently, we're not, uh, proposing any outdoor dining service in those areas.
Currently, what does that mean?
I mean, exactly what I said, we're not, we're not planning to have any dining out there under that covered patio space.
Okay, and there are tables in the plan in that space, am I correct?
Not, no, there shouldn't be in the packet.
So the packet that I'm looking at that was there today is, is merely. Covered where those tables are. Uh.
Can you see the?
On, wait a minute. I see a picture here, um, okay, there's no, all right, the other picture that I have. Shows tables in that white area. So there's.
Can I, can I just clarify how I organize the packets, because I think this may clean up some of the confusion, I don't ever remove, um. Past documents that have been submitted, so if that had been a part of the initial application, that would still be in that packet, because it retains part of the. The public record and you can track the progress, so anything newly submitted will be in the first, um, section of this hearing, so. The, the plan on the screen, um, is what's currently being proposed for, how things have kind of evolved through the past few meetings.
Okay, and if there's going to be any outside dining, would that have to come back before you?
They can't exceed the total seats without coming back before us, unless it's explicitly conditioned. Um, that they can't allocate, so that would have to be. A condition that they couldn't reallocate the seating to the exterior without further relief from the board, otherwise, they would in theory. Be allowed to, so long as they didn't exceed the amount of seats that, that are being approved.
Uh, then I would like to have them consider exactly that, if they're going to go to outside seating, that it come back to you. For, for discussion and approval, because we don't really know how. A restaurant with fifty-one people is even gonna begin to work. And, and a Thai restaurant next door, have no idea. And what impact that's gonna have on our. Our backyards, which are feet away.
So Sandra, your concern is.
Noise.
Is, is noise, and it's not necessarily, because they won't get, as it stands, they would have to come to us to get more seats. But if they chose to reallocate some outdoors, unless we condition it differently, they would be able to do that.
Right, and my concern is noise, because I am that next door. Like, I'm literally feet away.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we could certainly agree to a condition that there will be no outdoor service without, uh, further, uh, hearing before the board.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Makes it easy, thank you, Arthur.
It does.
Okay, uh, that was, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, perfect, Sandra, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, Megan?
Not seeing anybody.
Board members, it's your pleasure.
Make a motion and close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, motion made by John, seconded by Joe, John.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
I'm an I as well. All right, on to the merits. Anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, um, you know, we had some preliminary discussions from Arthur with the request with staff. Um, to work with that, so we can close the public hearing, which we did, and, um. Pretty much, um, after multiple meetings, um, as outlined from the staff report, I would. Make a motion to approve, um. We don't have the, there, there are a list of things, um, receipt of border quality, uh. More detailed landscaping plans, all the minor things that we can go through staff for, so. Um, I, I guess as the request to get detailed drawings, um. Uh, certificate of work compliance, address Mr. Pesci's updated comments prior to making the decision on this application. All, everything that we just discussed prior to, so I would, um, based on the comments earlier, I would go and approve the application.
And including the.
With the, with the recommendations. Working with the staff.
The outside seating part, too.
Yes, I, thank you, um, and the condition that if there were going to be any outdoor seating, it come back to us, um, to the board for approval.
Regardless of total number.
Yes, thanks, Nat.
Great.
Second.
All right, motion made by John, seconded by Nat. Uh, John.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Uh, okay, we're all back on to Forty-One WMR Trust, Forty-One West Maya Comet Road, um. Is a public, public hearing, and I believe the public hearing is still open, so, uh.
This is Stephen Cohen, just give him a minute to, to get on over. Stephen, is there anyone else I should be bringing over?
I believe Paul Santos, um. No, wait, no, I'm sorry, this one is, uh, is Dan Malloy. Is Dan on?
Yes. Yes.
So, um. I could give, uh, again, uh, Stephen Cohen for the applicants, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, um. Just to give you a very, uh, brief summary, I, I, I believe that based on our focus of the discussions. That the board seems to be somewhat satisfied with the, uh, design and, and alterations to the house, and to the extent that. Most of them are pedestrian in nature and that the, um, there's no expansion of ground cover, there's actually a reduction of the. Uh, stoops and patios and, and those kind of, um, impervious surfaces, so I'm not asking you to commit to that, I'm just telling you, that's my impression. Um, that the, uh, board, uh, seemed to be satisfied with the idea that there was a. A hundred and twenty square foot shed that was removed, and, and we would replace that with a, uh, two hundred square, which had, again, I'm not. Suggesting that's approved, I'm just telling you, I don't, that it seemed to not be a controversial piece, um, the, uh. Cabana Pavilion that have been, uh, proposed, uh, seemed to be undesirable, it has been removed, which was removed at the, at the last meeting, so I'm just confirming that. That is still, uh, off the table, um, the, um. Pool has been reduced in size and is now, uh, fourteen by thirty. Um, and the pool equipment, which is previously proposed to be in a fenced in area. Behind the, the cabana is now proposed to be in an underground basement space, uh, underneath the proposed shed. Um, so the revegetation, uh, of the disturbed area is proposed to now be. Uh, nine thousand four hundred and seventy-one square feet, um, which I think is the largest, if not really the only. Massive amount of revegetation that's been proposed in the, in the M M D, uh, I've reviewed a. A number of M M D permits, and I don't see that actually any of them have any revegetation, uh, or any substantial revegetation, so I think. Uh, nearly ten thousand square feet is, is fairly significant, um, and we are still requesting. A minor modification to the driveway, which would provide for, um, much less, um. That would provide for some screening, it would, it would reduce the, um. Public visibility of the house by adding a little bend to the curve, uh, a curve to the, uh, driveway, and we've. Adjusted that from the original one, which, which the neighbor was concerned with, with, you know, headlights going into their house, so. Uh, again, and I've checked with, um, Dan Malloy, uh, and Brian Madden, who are the surveyor and, and, uh. Wellands expert, uh, that we're using here, and both have confirmed that there's really no, um. Endangered species in that area that should, that we would be concerned with, that that's really more scrub oak than it is morelands area. Uh, and we're not proposing to destroy morelands to make an adjustment to the, to the driveway, um, if the board. Still doesn't like that, we could drop it, but we actually propose it as not only a benefit to the homeowner, but as a, as a benefit to the public by. Um, creating more screening for the hu- of the house from the road. So I think that that is a, a brief recap, and one point I'd like to make, and I'm sure that you saw it in my email, but I'd like to make it for the record. Is that, um, we have proposed a number of conditions to go with the pool, uh, these conditions are similar to the conditions that were originally developed. By the zoning and planning staff, along with the Conservation Commission, um, to apply to the V R District, which requires a special permit to do a pool. And it's not the same as the M M D District, but it has a significant overlap in the purpose of requirement for that, uh, um. For that permit. The, uh, conditions that we're proposing, and of course, you could make any adjustments that you, you like, but, um, is to. Stop all chemical treatment of the pool, twenty-one days before any draining or discharge of the pool, which lets the. The water come to a, uh, natural state, um, that no pool water would be discharged on the, onto the property, any, any, uh. Draining of the pool would be done by truck, and that truck would be then, uh, disposed of at the wastewater treatment facility. Um, that there would be no additional exterior lighting aside the, from the lighting that's required for, for the pool. Uh, there would, there would be an auto cover for the pool, uh, which both helps eliminate the need for a fence, and also reduces. Uh, the impact of the pool when it's not open, um, that all mechanical equipment would be either. Uh, within a structure or within a fence, um, that we would use low decibel, uh, pool equipment. And that we would use construction fencing or other physical demarcations for the limit of work during all construction. And that there would be, uh, no construction between June fifteenth or Sept- and September fifteenth, or whatever. Uh, term the, the commission decided was appropriate for, you know, quote unquote, no summer, uh, building. Um, and then the condition proposed by one of the butters, we thought was a good idea that we should. Uh, prioritizing using, um, all of the spoils from any construction. For any topsoil fill that was used in the area to minimize, um, the introduction of any, uh, invasive seeds or anything like that. Uh, and then, um. Uh, use any, uh, screened loam after that, but, but we don't, we don't think there's going to be a large amount of, uh, soil needed. Uh, here, so those are the conditions that, that the board typically uses with, um, pools, or that the. Zoning board uses for pools in, in the V R District that I think are highly applicable here, because they address the conditions that the planning board is. Uh, supposed to address, ju- just to reiterate what those are, if you look at, um. You know, thirty-nine, one thirteen C one, it says that the board is to grant special permits for structures and uses in the V R District. And then include conditions that require the sighting of structures and uses to minimize potential adverse in fact, impacts on the moreland environment. And it's scenic integrity, which is what you've done in other permits, um, and that you should, um. In, in thirteen D, that you should conduct a site plan review. To maximize the distance of any known plants or animals, endangered plants and animals from the setting of structures. To minimize the disturbance by limiting construction to certain times of the year. And to maximize the protection of scenic views using grades, elevations, and clustering of structures and uses. And to maximize the protection of the morelands, um, and heathland vegetation by limiting physical disruptions to indigenous and natural systems. So if you look at the, um, intent and purpose and goals of the bylaw. What you're supposed to do here, the interests you're supposed to protect, and if you look at the permit that we're applying for, I think that we have, uh, applied for something. That is, that mitigates and is consistent with the, um. Pro- the, 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 what's allowed under the bylaw, and that proposes conditions that are consistent with the interest that you're supposed to protect. Um, I also think it's worth noting that there are, um. Four other permits for pools that have been approved in the past two to five years. Um, all of which have essentially no conditions or very few conditions, uh, three members of the sitting board. V- voted on those, um, approvals, and all, all of those approvals were adopted unanimously. Um, and I would just like to note that the, the approval of three cutweed was for a forty-five by sixteen foot pool with a detached eight. By eight spa, um, that was actually installed with other permit in two thousand and seven, but when it was reviewed. In two thousand and eighteen, the board chose to take no action and put no conditions in place for it. Um, in, at five, uh, six wall bang, um, I'm sorry, that was. I, I take it back, that was at three cutweed, that was a forty-five by sixteen pool, yeah, okay, so then at six wall bang. The board approved five to zero, a twenty by forty pool, uh, and determined that the. Application met the performance standards simply by, um, mitigating the location of the pool and, and having some construction protocols. And requiring that there be some evergreen and natural vegetation for screening, there are no ongoing conditions such as the ones that I've suggested in that. Permit, um, at five cutweed is an approval in two thousand and nineteen for a thirty-six by eighteen foot pool. Again, the performance standards were met based on the location of the pool, construction protocols with no ongoing conditions. And at fifty-two West Maya Comet, I know the board is familiar, it approved a thirty-two by fourteen pool, uh, for pool within two thousand and twenty. That was then modified in two thousand and twenty-one, it was originally going to be in a deck, and then it was going to be, uh, now it's allowed at grade, and again, that pool, uh. The board determined met its performance standards simply by the location of the pool, the construction protocols with no ongoing conditions. And the only limitation in that, in that, in that permit is that the pool has surround was limited to four feet in width. Um, so I think when this board has looked at other applications that have included pools, it has determined that it's. That its standards can be met and its performance standards can be met, um, through mitigation that is substantially less than is being proposed here. Um, so I, I would never suggest to this board that just because you have approved something in the past, you need to now do it. Uh, uh, again, that is not an appropriate legal standard, that's not really how precedent works. But I do think what is, is incumbent upon the board is to understand that you have to and should. Approve things that are consistent with your performance standards and guidelines, and that you should be consistent in the exercise of your authority. In interpreting those, and so I would suggest that. In the same way that those other applications were deemed to have met the performance standards and to have been adequately mitigated. Um, that we would suggest that this one not only meets those, but is substantially more, uh. Um, in tune with the M M D District and a better mitigation of any proposed or of potential harms. Uh, of note, if there are any, uh, concerns of any environmental issues, we received a no-take letter from the. Uh, Mass D E P, from the Fisheries and Wildlife Division, which runs the MISA Program, Mass Endangered Species Act Program. And that letter only has one condition, which is that the, um, applicant install physical barriers and demarcation. To prevent any kind of work outside the limit of work resource area during construction. So in other words, the people who are the true experts on protecting endangered plants and animals, and are charged with doing that as a state, as state officials. Determine that the proposed work does not propose, does not have any, um, concerns as long as we. Protect, as long as we protect the, um, uh, you know, demarcate the work area, the, the restriction, the restricted work area. Um, so I'm happy to take questions on this, I certainly don't want to be presumptive, but I think that the board has, you know, likely heard enough information. And I'm hoping we can get to an answer tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, um, board members. John.
Yeah, uh, I'll just be redundant from the one, two, three meetings prior, uh, the original proposal, um, um. Obviously, that met the most, uh, criti- uh, criticism was the. Original eighteen by thirty-six pool that was reduced the second time to fourteen by thirty-two feet, uh, now to the third time, fourteen by thirty, I mean, it's, it's. And, and the other things that have been addressed by the, the changes and, um, the reduction in the size of the plant. Although, again, as I stated in the last meeting, I'm appreciative of the, uh, owner's, uh. Uh, willingness to, uh, reduce their, um, I guess the request, I do want to point out, um. This is, uh, when you look at the morelands management district, um, it's, it is the, one of the most restrictive. Um, districts and zones for a reason, when you start to look at the performance standards for plan review, um, in the M M D. Uh, the first three things that they start in the sentence are to maximize the protection of endangered plant and animal species. Second, to maximize the protection of scenic views, uh, through citing structures, uh, lower elevation, et cetera. Third, to maximize the protection of the morelands and the health, um, land vegetation and land forms. And I just do not see how any of this, uh, proposal with the pools is going to. Um, protect any of those items that are addressing the performance standards, now. You can reduce it down to a hot tub, um, you're still going to have a disturbance of property, um, in that district, you're still going to have. Uh, the, the pools and the chemicals and things like that, and you can state that they're going to be trucked off and, and. We don't know where there's an enforcement agency, or they're just going to say that and, and dump it in the woods, um, I, I. For all those reasons, we can find something in each, in every one of those three, uh, performance standards that would. Um, contradict, um, how this is a benefit to this particular zoning district. And I'm only speaking for myself and not for the other members, um, I just, you know, you can come back five times and reduce it down to a five by five. I'm still going to vote, um, in the negative, uh, for this par- particular application, but, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, John, Barry.
Thank you, um, just a few questions to the applicant at this point, and, and maybe this is best in Dan Malloy's court. Um, one thing I will say, I do appreciate what you're trying to do with the driveway, I think that's a good idea, um, but I am. A little troubled by some things, so let me just dispel. Total amount of ground cover that would be available to you in terms of square feet would be.
Might have to pass that one to Steve, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, I apologize for that.
That's okay, I.
The, you mean the square foot of the structure?
No, square, total amount of ground cover that you have permissible to build on, on that lot in terms of square feet. This is, this is kind of important, because it's, we're going to run through a few things here.
But I, I, are you asking me what's available, or are you asking me what's proposed?
I'm asking you what would be available in total. For, for that lot.
So I can answer that, so at half a percent, you're looking at, uh. Make sure that the, the math right here, about three thousand, about thirty-one hundred square feet.
About thirty-one hundred square feet of ground cover. Correct?
I'm just running the math to double check here, make sure.
That's okay, and that's, that's with no structures or anything on it.
Is it, no, I'm just going to double check, is this a half percent, I don't have all the numbers.
It, it, it is, it is a half percent, yeah.
It is, okay.
So a half a percent, and it's only six hundred and forty square feet.
Yeah.
I'm, so I'm really confused at this point, so the amount of ground cover with nothing on that lot would be six hundred and forty square feet, right?
Uh, n- no, uh, so there's a couple of ways ground cover is done in the M M D, so that you have. Your, um, ten acre zoning with a half percent, that's, that half percent is based on a ten acre lot, right? But then you also have the idea that the applicant can do, um, up to four hundred square feet. Of impervious surface and eight hundred square feet of, uh, of ground cover with no permit, and then it can do more than that. Um, upon relief, with relief from, from the board.
Okay. Because, all right, so that, that brings me to, the house is how large? In terms of, in terms of square footage that it covered?
The existing house?
Yeah.
Dan, do you have that?
Uh, it's about fourteen hundred and sixty square feet.
Okay, and then that also has a deck as well too, right?
Right.
And the deck is?
The deck total, no, if I want to give you. I'm going to give you an overall, maybe, I don't have it all broken down in front of me. So the total, it's called, it's called building coverage between buildings and deck right now, is probably somewhere in the order of twenty-six hundred square feet.
About twenty-six hundred square feet, okay, and then. Let's take it a step further, there'll be a two hundred square foot shed. Did you include, you probably didn't include that, you probably included the one twenty in there, right?
Uh, the number I just gave you is strictly between the existing house and the decks that are around it right now.
All right, so another two hundred from the shed, all right?
Well, technically, the shed doesn't count, but yes.
It does or it doesn't, I'm sorry.
It, it, it doesn't count as ground cover, but it's still, you know, but if you want to use it for whatever purpose you're trying to get.
No, that's fine, and then the. Pool, once that's put in, is going to have, um, some type of cement. Walkway around it or something, is that correct, or?
It, it, it'll have a surround, yes.
All right, and so it's going to be fourteen by thirty plus, it's actually going to be larger than that.
The impervious surface?
Yeah, because that's not going to, that's going to be considered impervious surface too, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to be at a minimum. Fourteen by thirty by how large, four feet, six feet?
Um, well, the plan is to just have a small surround around the whole thing, and then have, um. Like, the patio part would just be on one side next to the house.
I didn't think there was a patio.
The, there's a, uh, like a connection of bluestone between the house and the pool, but I believe it's six feet wide.
All right, but let's, let's go back to impervious surface, so what are we, what are we dealing with on the perimeter of the pool? Fourteen by thirty by how many feet, one, two, four, six. It's important.
Um, the pool surround, the patio, you're looking plus or minus three hundred square feet.
Plus minus three hundred.
Three hundred.
For impervious surface?
For the bluestone patio that you're talking about the surround.
So there is.
Looking the pool or the patio?
With the pool.
With.
The trans- the transition between the pool and whatever happens at this point, is that going to be bluestone? Is it gonna be cement? What? What is, I mean, most pools that I've been.
Barry, if I may, I think you're trying to look at the coping around the pool and that. About two feet on each side. So if you're having a pool that's fourteen by thirty. The ultimate space from the edge of the coping to the edge of the coping on both directions would be eighteen. By thirty-six would be roughly six hundred and forty-eight square feet, if that's what you're.
There you go. That's, that's what I'm trying to track out at this.
Yeah, that, I, I, I think that's right. We, we're proposing twenty-eight inches of coping on either side, just over two feet of coping or, or around the whole thing. Um, but with a six-foot wide stone band just between the pool and the house.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about the stone because the stone is pervious surface at this point, but I'm, I'm just trying to do all this addition in terms of. Impervious surface.
Hmm.
And. I, I kinda gotta concur with John a little bit that I. From when I first started looking at, you know, thinking about pools in the MMD to where we are today. I, I'm becoming less of a fan of it because it, it starts racking up a lot of disturbance in an area. Here, um, so. I'm not really a hundred percent sure this is such a good plan for the MMD. I, I think we as a board may have to revisit the MMD in relation to where pools are. Um, and, you know, in relation to how much, how much area is really being utilized. As well too. I mean, this, this, as John said, in this area. We were always trying, I think, to make sure that we were always trying to minimize. What intrusions were going on here, and I don't, I'm beginning to feel like we're heading in the opposite direction. Whereas in, as opposed to minimize, and I think we've got landowners trying to get, again, within rights. To get to that maximum out that they can get to with things like ground cover and stuff, so. I, I'm becoming less of a fan of, of where I was several years ago with this and, and, um. I, I, I think it needs a little more revisiting. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Barry. Um, any other board members? Joe?
Yeah, I kind of, um, I'm gonna follow, interact with John and Barry on this. Um, I really just see this area as, uh. You know, as it stated within our guidelines, it's just a very fragile and, and, um, you know. Protective place that we, we really need to watch out for the moorland area. Um, and I, I don't like a pool. You know, in this area, I think it's just gonna be exposed, the lighting, the, you know, if there's a crack or whatever, the ground, what infiltration. Um, and there's part of me in my concommod days that really would, this would bother me as well, so. Um, I echo everything that Barry and John have just stated, so I'm kind of in agreement with this, as far as a pool goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I, I would just, I like to, um, you know, I think that it's been well said by all the board members, so I'm not gonna re- repeat it. I, I don't think it's in harmony with the, with the um, spirit of the, of the bylaw. Um, and I'd like to point out, I think I sat on two of the applications that did receive pools in the MMD. And, and I, I think you're failing to mention all the ones we have denied, because there's been a few that have been straight out denied that, that you should. Have pondered as well, but you know, the cu- cudweed one to say that. Um, and that's the more previous one. I wasn't on the board when, when the one that was built was, that asked for forgiveness. Um, but. What you failed to, to take into account is that we made them move that pool all the way to the other side of the house before it was approved. And it was tucked into a, a large amount of screening, natural screening that already existed. So I, I think that, you know, the reason for a special permit is to have a. Appropriate things in appropriate places, and, and that's what the special permit gives us the ability to do. And, and what I hear from my board is that, that, that most people don't feel that this is an appropriate place. So, um. With that said, we have, do we have anyone in the public? Meg?
Uh, yes, we have Whitney Gifford followed by Emily Molden.
Alrighty, great. Welcome, Whitney.
Good afternoon. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Uh, very briefly, uh, just wanted to, uh. In keeping with sort of where the, the board is going, um, remind them that on the. Uh, wallbang and the two cudweed, uh, applications. You are on the far side of the MMD from the current application. You're over in the. Ahab Drive, um, Davis Lane area where, uh, it's a heck of a lot denser. And those lots were created, um, as freeze lots. Uh, with the MMD, uh, bearing down on them. So they are somewhat. Smaller, different, they are set into existing trees, they are not sort of as we have on West Maya Comet Avenue. Uh, Andrew Wythe-type houses, um, out in, in the, the Heathlands, Moorelands. Um, as far as the closest one that we have, the fifty-two West Maya Comet. Uh, that was an existing hot tub in a deck, um, where the applicant came in and talked about. Uh, water therapy and, you know, sort of a, a, a medical need that isn't certainly demonstrated in your current application. Um, the only other concerns, uh, we've got here with the bigger lots, um. Is that if you, if you're gonna have the amount of screening that is being proposed, it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. Um, and it, it is much lower scrub, much lower uh vegetation than it is on the other side of, of the zone. Um, and the only other concern that the neighbor would have regarding the. Driveway is it's proposed as white shell. If it could be kept to, uh, stone gravel, it's not gonna light up. Uh, the, the vista as you're looking at it, either from West Maya Comet or across the pond. Um, and, um. I think that's all we've got at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
We have Emily followed by Tom Barta.
Great, welcome, Emily.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Emily Molden here for the Nantucket Land Council. Um, just a few additional comments. I, I think, um, I have spoken in the, in the past that. We're, we don't believe that this proposals has met the standards of the, of the MMD. Just particularly as it relates to the pool, I think it's really not just about what can be physically seen and from where, but. Other adverse impacts that are associated with the use. Some of those have been mentioned, the noise, lighting, future maintenance, especially in this case. I would say with the proximity of Maya Comet Pond. Um, and then another point, it, it obviously is very important that the state's. Natural Heritage Agency has issued a determination that there'll be no take here, but. Just to remind the board that our zoning bylaw does actually have pretty different standards from the state agency. Um, that I know you're all, you're all taking into account. Um, I appreciated the comments from Mr. Rector about, about ground cover and it actually brought up a question for me that. Um, I'll, maybe as best for staff, but I'll, I'll pose to all of you because I was a little concerned that. They had already maxed out their ground cover on the site, both for the dwelling and for, um, impervious surfaces, which. Is included in the Moorelands Management District as accessory structures. I know that, uh, two hundred square foot shed is typically not considered ground cover, but I'm. Curious if that also would hold true for the Moorelands Management District since it very specifically calls out this. More restricted ground cover, including accessory structures. So I'm not really sure which, um, provision trumps the other, but that would be. A question I might leave for staff. But then finally, um, I think just with regards to the driveway. I certainly appreciate the amount of revegetation that's being proposed. Um, and that certainly does maximize the protection of this area based on those standards that, uh, Mr. Trudell had. Had read, um, especially with the native species that have been, um, put on the plan. But I am concerned about the new vegetation removal with the, um, realignment of the driveway. If it's not truly necessary, I don't think that is something that should be permitted. Um, it's, I mean, I, I certainly can't speak to the screening, uh, aspect and concern. But the, the plants that are out there and whether or not they themselves are rare or endangered are not the only. Important component to the sensitivity of this area. Even scrub oak can play a pretty important role in, in these particular landscapes and habitats. So I just wanted to put that out there for the board to consider. Um, I think that any vegetation removal that can be avoided. Uh, should be, and I certainly would support a condition on the surface of the driveway as was, uh, mentioned by the previous speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Tom?
Uh.
Okay, Tom.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to speak in regards to the letter that, uh, uh, Mr. Cohen had written, uh, with the, um. The addendums that he had put in there. Um, he's basically stated no exterior mechanical work from June to September. Uh, I believe when, uh, thirty-seven West Maya Comet was, uh, was approved. Um, that was no work at all on the site because of the noise generation and everything else in regard to the habitat out there. Um, as we all know, the Harbor House had that, um, listed as one of your requirements. During construction of no exterior work, and as we all know. They were doing the interior work and it was louder than you could imagine because they had taken the windows out and. Was running the saws and everything else inside, so it was echoing. And as you know, we had the noise complaints from all the neighbors for that project. Um, just wanted to reiterate that with you. Uh, so there has been, uh, precedent set that there would be no construction. During the summer month regardless of interior or exterior, so that was done before. Um, the other thing is that the driveway is, the parking area is the highest elevation of that lot, pretty much within a foot. Or so of the highest point out there. Um, you know, you had suggested to have Mr. Cohen speak with the. Speak with the neighbors in regard to try to, uh, alleviate any questions or anything. But as I discussed before, you know, that parking area is basically right there. Um, and it looks like it's about four car widths wide, at least four car widths wide. It looks like from the plan, from the, uh, what's gonna be, what's currently disturbed and what's going to be re. Regrown there. I know that area quite well, and that's a very large parking area. Um, if you do do a pool, or if a pool is allowed. Mr. Cohen has just stated that the equipment would be within, under the structure or quote-unquote fenced in. So he's leaving that open to either be under the structure, which. I do believe the zoning officer will say that that's not allowed to be under a, under a shed because a shed is a shed. Without a foundation, quote-unquote, and therefore if you put the equipment under the shed, that kind of makes it turn into. A, um, a structure. So I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, issue in regard. And also in regard to the moorland, it is the moorland environment. It's a whole big picture. It's everything. It's not just one little aspect of it, it's the whole thing. And. As cudweed, we know it's all the way over at the other end and, and I do remember those going through and you, you were. Very tough on placement and everything else. And fifty-two. West Maya Comet, that was for therapeutic purposes and medical reasons. And in reality, that house is a, is a rental, a seasonal rental from beginning to end. They rented. You know, for the whole season pretty much. So, um, you know, it's not just the homeowner that's using it. It's, it's definitely a rental. So I just wanted to reiterate that and, um, you know. I agree, I, I kind of agree with the idea in regard to the gravel because. Those shells will be white as can be and you'll see it across the pond, and that's definitely not an appropriate area. Um, so I just thank you for your time in regard to this and, um, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We have John up next.
Alrighty. John Barata, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm John Barrett, a co-manager of the Thirty-Nine West Maya Comet Road LLC and a budding neighbor to the applicant. In nineteen seventy-nine, our family built the fourth house in the West Maya Comet area and first home on the pond. We were present when the Mooreland Management District was established to protect the area's ecological uniqueness. And expansive open vistas of the surrounding heat in Mooreland. At that time, short-eared owls regularly flew about the moors during the day. And barn owls were often seen chasing moths in car headlights across the moors at night. During the nineteen eighties, Maya Comet was an off-the-beaten-path oasis, mostly known to local islanders and summer residents in the know. Once discovered, however, the beaches became more crowded and homes began springing up around the area. Sadly, the ever-growing beach and pond scene, along with increased home building. The short-eared owl became scarce in the region and no longer was a common occurrence to see the barn owls hunting at night. The under, the area underwent ecological stress that continues to be tested today. I raise this past because Bill Klein's efforts to protect this area for sensible growth in the Moorelands Management District. Was a prescient development, line in the sand for what was to come. Bill knew there would be pressure to build in this area and wanted to keep infringement on wildlife and scenic beauty to a minimum. What wouldn't have been appropriate then, and we believe isn't appropriate now. Are the installation of pools or construction features designed to show. Rather than subtly blending into the natural beauty of the area. I've made our family's position known about its opposition to the installation of pools in the Moorelands Management District. That we find contrary, contradictory to the protection of this area. Because the introduction of high-growing vegetation will alter the region's unique character. Along with our opposition of pools is our opposition to the applicant's. Proposal of the white shell parking area and turnaround located on the highest point. In the Moorelands Management District that can be seen across from the pond and along the road. Um. I appeal to the board's special permit authority to use its discretion for protecting the Moorelands Management from further development and stress on this fragile. And sensitive, sensitive region of the island by voting to turn down the applicant's proposal for installation of a pool. And expansive shell turnaround drive. What does approving pool, when, I'm sorry, when does approving pool stop? And at what cost to the area's scenic integrity? Thank you for considering our position.
Thank you, John. Meg, do we have anyone else from the public?
Uh, Chris Donilon.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Dave. Um, I'm not gonna take up any more of your time, but, um, I just want to say that Joe and I. Support whatever John Barrett and Thomas have said, and I just wanted to thank. You, John, Joe, and Barry for your comments tonight. Um, this is a very special place that we live in. And we just want to keep it that way. And thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Chris. Meg, anybody else?
No, I'm not seeing anybody.
Stephen.
Sure, um, let me just respond to some technical points that were made. Uh, there was some question about whether or not the. Sheds count as a ground cover in the MMD district and also whether or not mechanical equipment could be under them. Uh, so I'd just like to provide some clarity on that point, um, to not to get too deep in the weeds on how zoning works, but. Sheds do not count as ground cover. Um, but if you look at the bylaw for that, it says that the height of the shed. Has to be no more than sixteen feet as measured from, uh, the slab or a crawl space. And so it suggests that if you had a full basement, that it would not count as, that it would then count as ground cover. So putting mechanical equipment within a crawl space would, would not turn this shed into a, um. Uh, into a str- uh, structure that counts as ground cover. If we had full height ceilings, then, then the, um, question would be answered the opposite. So, um, the shed can be a non-ground cover, uh, structure. Then you get into this odd scenario of, well, what's really the ground cover allowed? So half a percent is what's allowed by right. The alternative to that is the fifteen hundred square feet that's allowed. Um, and then the question is, well, what's, uh, there, there's this additional layer that says, okay, anything more than eight hundred square feet. Um, and then the question is, well, what's, uh, th- there's this additional layer that says, okay, anything more than eight hundred square feet needs to be approved by the planning board. So you have an unusual situation or unique situation where there's an allowance of ground cover that's available, but also requires a special permit. And that's the situation we're in, where you have more than eight hundred square feet of ground cover that requires a special permit and less than the fifteen hundred square feet that's allowed by zoning. And the, no- nothing that we're doing here violates any of those uh restrictions or guidelines. So I think that as far as the ground cover that's allowed, the service that's allowed and the uh shed that would be, also have the equipment under it, that those would be uh zoning compliance. In, in terms of the unpopularity of uh pools in the MMD, I, I appreciate the general idea that is being propos- that is, you know, um, well, look, before we move on to that, I just want to say that if the board wants to say no white um shells and it has to be gravel, like, that's not a hill we're gonna die on. That, that, I'm not even gonna ask my client. That's, that's fine, right? Um, but, but the idea that pools are not allowed in the MMD flies in the face of what, of the bylaw that says that pools are allowed in the MMD by special permit. And that was at the in, has been the case since the MMD was created. And it's been the case every time the town has updated the uh bylaw. It has never looked at the, at that and said, okay, well, that was a big mistake. We should take them out. And in fact, that bylaw was just updated at the twenty twenty-two um, special town, or town meeting and pools were not removed as a as a allowed use. So I think the board is in the position that if it wants to deny an allowed use, it needs more than a strong dislike and general, general dislike and general concern about what maybe could speculatively happen here. Um, you would have to show that we are not proposing something that meets the bylaws and you'd have to make findings that would say that we are in violation of those, of those guidelines or not substantially meeting them. But you would also have to allow that there's some room where they could be met. And this board is basically saying, I don't like them. I don't think it's, I don't think they're appropriate and I don't care what you do. We're not gonna give you a pool in that district. And if that's what you're doing, that's sort of the very definition of an arbitrary and capricious decision because you're denying the applicant the ability to get something that's legally possible, who's proposing significant mitigation. No one has said, oh, well, if you do more, that would get you to the level that where these approval are approvable. Um, so I, I think the board needs to keep in mind the actual situation that's legally applicable here. It's not just, oh, under special permits, we can approve and deny what we don't want. It's that you have to, you have to approve things that are allowable unless you, unless they're not meeting the um, the performance standards. And there has to be some way to meet the performance standards for your decision to be legal. So I would suggest that you don't have the authority to just out of hand, turn down pools. And then if you're gonna turn down the pool, you have to give me some reason that I could then potentially overcome through realistic mitigation. Um, it's not, you know, there ha- that, or you have to change the bylaw to say that they're not allowed. But they can't be allowed, but be impossible to obtain. That would be, that, that kind of a decision, I would suggest would not withstand a legal challenge.
Yeah.
Alright. Point taken, Mr. John. Board members?
Just one more, you know, I might as well, since I'm all, since I'm all alone over here in the corner. Um, you know, I, actually, Steve said is actually kind of what I was thinking, of course, not in his words, but this, this zoning district is it's just, it's worded in a way that can be interpreted more than one way. It's really kind of simple. Uh, so I do agree with the whole, but actually what um, Whit said earlier was actually a good point um about the cudweed ones and over towards Ahab were the sort of uh, original two-acre lots and stuff and, and, and they're already around other houses and there's all sorts of different pine trees and stuff over there. There's no pine trees out here, so it's completely different topography. And I get that. And, and, and Dave, you, you're right, we did deny several and um, in similar land uh, you know, makeup of this one. So it's, it's hard to be consistent and inconsistent. Sort of, it depends on what you're talking about. You know, you when these come in once every year and a half or so, it's like a cringe, you know, and you see it on the, in the packet. And we end up having these big, long conversations about every one of them. So I understand what you guys are saying and I, you know, it's not that I don't agree. I, I just more about the whole process of this zoning district is frustrating because it's not clear. You know, and it's, it's sort of subjective to opinion more than it is. Uh, it's, it's a little bit beyond the special permit, in my opinion. But I'm certainly not gonna you know, try to object to what everyone's saying, because it's really, it's everybody's right, if you really want to know. So that's it for me. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Nat. Carl?
No pools and, no pools and great point, Dave.
No swimming and great point either.
Well, I've listened to this for six and a half years, this debate about pools. Um, and I am not the board member who's gonna say I care, I could care less about the Morelands Management District and too tired of arguing about pools, uh, which was said at the last meeting. Um, that's a very scenic and uh, sand plain grasslands, rare birds and uh, rare animals and plants. Um, I've been out there a hundred times in my life here for fifty-three years and counting. Um, and I would challenge, not being a lawyer, I would challenge Mr. Cohen's um comments. Uh, we are, and I'm a non-voting alternate on this, by the way, just to disclose that. Um, but we are the, the special permit granting authority as the planning board and we can interpret zoning bylaws and we can interpret, we can uh, listen to neighbors' concerns, we can evaluate each uh, application one by one. Um, I have no objection of debating about pools till the cows come home. Um, I think we should. I think we should have a conversation about pools in all the zoning districts and all the towns historic, uh, historic districts, which we have in the past. We've had town meeting discussions at length about pools and articles about pools. But this board is the special permit granting authority. Um, and we have that authority to, to interpret and to discuss and to evaluate. Um, the Morelands Management District was created for a reason to protect rare plants and animals uh, and scenic views and uh, some of those grasslands out there are indigenous to Nantucket and nowhere else in the world. They're managed by prescribed burns and so on. I could go on all day, but um, like I say, I'm a non-voting alternate on this. We are the special permit granting authority. I am sensitive to the neighbors' concerns. I take a walk on that road. Um, and I would like to see scenic beauty preserved. And I think it's inappropriate to have pools in the Moreland Management District. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I, there aren't any, if I could make one comment, which is this, that, you know, this board's authority is to, if you look at those guidelines, is, is to maximize the protection of the um, interests using the tools that it's supposed to use. And then those tools are listed as uh, grading, location, clustering, sighting, uh, screening and other conditions that the board deems appropriate to protect those interests. So I would, I would suggest that as your regulations are written, as the bylaw is written, anything that is an allowed use under the bylaw is approvable meeting, if it meets those guidelines, and you should be keeping it as tight as possible. Which is why we have this pool shrunken size, which is why we have it pulled tight to the house, which is why we have it uh, smaller than any of the other ones, which is why we minimize the patio and eliminated the cabana and put the screening under, the equipment underground and are committing to all of the environmental conditions um, that we're committing to. So we're happy to take a uh Christmas tree full of conditions. Uh, put as many ornaments as you want that make sense on it. But I think at the end of the day, legally, you are required to approve something that meets those guidelines. And if you're taking the position that there's no approvable version of this, I, I would say that's legally very concerning.
Thank you, Stephen. Uh, one more shot at the public and then um, I'm back to the board if I could, Megan.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Alrighty. What would you like to do, board? Barry?
Thanks. Um, you know, I, I appreciate maybe another month to be able to go back through and look at some of the other decisions. I'm sorry, I should have done that beforehand, but um, I was kind of surprised that this board so far has allowed four pools out there um, to af- to after my tenure. And I do recollect one of them being, it was well after the fact and the area made sense, but um, I, I, I might want to challenge some assertions here because I, I really want to look at the pre-existing footprint of what's out there right now, of what is disturbed and what is not disturbed versus what is gonna be wound up being disturbed by not only the, the introduction of the pool, but any surrounding landscape, be it pervious or impervious. Um, and we're gonna go back to the fact that, you know, this, as worse opposed to some of the other subdivision, some of the other properties that were done, this one lays in, in, in a very low land type topography. Um, whereas I, I think the other ones had a little bit more screening and surrounding with them. So I, I think that given the geography of the area, it, it heightens and raises my concern one more time. I'm gonna wanna go back through and revisit the total, all the ground cover calculations that are currently in place versus what's gonna wind up happening, you know, by the time we do close this thing out. Mr. Cohen is right that we have started and set a precedent at this point. Um, but again, you know, to, to, to just suggest that they all get thrown into the same blender and all become the same thing, I might take a little bit of exception to because each one of these should be addressed on a case-by-case basis. Um, and here we go. I, I'd like that opportunity to, to do some further examination about how the, all those cases, both what was approved and what was denied, begin to stack up, not only in terms of just the fact that they're in the MMD, but what was unique about each one of them. Um, and maybe in there lies, lies the answer to, to where this board really should head. So that's, if, if you're asking for a decision tonight, I, I'm gonna tell you, I for one, I'm not ready to do that yet. Um, I feel like there, there's a little more due diligence that needs to be done. And it's based upon those parameters that I've given you. Um, and you know, I refuse to, as much as I can appreciate what, what Attorney Cohen is saying at this point, um, I, again, you know, I think we're back at that case-by-case basis. That board does have the discretion to weigh on unequivocally, as opposed to just homogenizing the mix of what's in an area. So um, I, I'm, that's, that's my request at this point is, is to allow for a continuance based upon those variables uh, that I've just cited. Because I think that if we were, we were to take it, there'd be a lot of headbutting back and forth on this, based, based upon those, some of those parameters. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. John?
Thank you, um, Chair. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to a continuance. Um, however, you know, this is the second time we've been, um, Mr. Cohen had uh stated what we should be doing as a board and what we should be adhering to and how we make a decisions. If it was, uh, I, I think as Barry said, we, we do have an opinion on this. If it was just something uh, he wouldn't need to come to the board to get approved. He would, he wouldn't need to come to the board for approval um, with a special permit. We have a little bit of uh, uh, liberty to say why we would deny the application and and it sounds like for the record, uh, Mr. Cohen would like us to state that. And I can probably, and o- over the next meeting, I will uh, be writing down all the reading, reasons. Uh, now, I can quickly say, again, I don't think it meets any of the criteria of the three uh, performance standards by the plan review of the uh, MMD. I can say it does not maximize the protection of endangered plants and animal species. It absolutely has the opposite effect by adding a ton of impervious surfaces, including uh, chemicals and, and pools. And if, we didn't talk about the environmental um, uh, disadvantage if something happens to pools or cracks or leaks. And it does happen. It's not like it's a rarity. It, they do happen. So there's maintenance and disposal. So just starting off, that's one. Does it maximize the protection of scenic views? Obviously not. When we're disturbing the, the, the low land area there, how is that maximizing protection? If anything, we're making disturbances and creating more of a, a problem, a problem with the scenic uh, uh, views. And are we protecting the more land health vegetation? Uh, absolutely not. Why are we doing that when we're removing um, the plant species there and, and, and maybe altering driveways and putting other species of plants that aren't necessarily um, indigenous to the island. So just, I'm just briefly looking at three and those would be my reasons why. If we needed to state those for any kind of legal matter in the future as to why we made a decision about that. And just at looking at staff reports and comments, you know, no, I would not be supportive of the creation of any new or increased disturbances to the site. We've already looked at a mathematical equation, how much impervious surface is going to be added um, in addition to what is already there. So um, I could come up with twenty more things. And if that's what's going to take uh, for the next one in the next meeting or the uh, continuance, I'll do that. I just, if we need to be prepared as to why we came to that decision, because we need to have uh, reasons, well, I just gave, had given you the reasons why we should deny this. And previous uh, decisions, that being said, and I'm probably guilty of, of uh, approving some as well. And I can look at the one on um, uh, where we talked about the health benefit of the, you know, the, the spa that was uh, in the deck. And then later did we find out that that deck was pushed out uh, farther out and then it was enlarged. And you know, fool me once, uh, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. And I, uh, I refuse to be handheld as to what we should do based on, this is our job. This is our job to hear this special permit and give our opinion as to why we will approve or deny it. And I'm going to uh, stand by my reasonings why I think we should deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Nat?
Uh, okay. So I just want to follow up a little bit with Barry alluded to, at least what I think he's alluding to. And that is local control versus a court decision. And that's really what I'm concerned with personally. Like, if the, if we went to town meeting with an article that remove pools from the MMD, would require a two-thirds majority, and the way things are going lately, wouldn't surprise me if it passed. Just saying. We got, we, we do allow roosters in the ROH though. But anyway, so it, it, this is so infrequent that every time it comes up, there's different board members and different, you know, I don't wanna say um, comparisons or whatever, but there's other things that have happened in the dynamics of the island, regardless of this district, that create sort of a, a new conversation in an old conversation, sort of at the same time, which is what we're having now. Um, so I think we should be careful about letting someone else decide this district for us. That's what I'm concerned with. Okay? Um, I don't even know how much land is left out here to build on. Is there any, any unbuilt lots? Is it all conservation besides these outskirts lots? I don't even know that answer. Is all these houses, is this the only building that's ever gonna happen out here as far as fresh new lots? I don't actually know the answer to that. Lots. I don't actually know the answer to that question. I don't think anyone's asked it before, but. Um, I think we should continue it for reasons that Barry said. And myself, I think we should have, um. Either John Giorgio or um. One of the other people look at this district maybe with, you know, ask a few questions and see what kind of answer we get. Um, that's my thought, but I, you know, as I said earlier, I'm. You know, I'm not gonna go against my board members or something like this, okay? But I think the principle of it is an issue. Uh, I certainly don't want a court deciding the MMD. I think that's, that is not what we want. Especially the way courts rule in Massachusetts with land use. So I would uh, consider looking at this for another month and and coming back uh. To this, to another meeting. That's my thought.
Thank, thank you, Nat.
I don't want anyone else thinks about that.
Uh, listen, I I think we've all heard enough about this and if it's the board's intent to continue. Uh, I would suggest that maybe we should, we should take a vote on that and um. And the discussion can ta- continue next month.
Coming.
Anybody wanna, and and Stephen, I'm not shutting you down here.
Yeah, but Mr. Chairman, I I would request the continuance. Uh, I I have some more comments to make, but I'm happy to hold them and. Uh, I think uh, submit them in in writing and would request a continuance to the next meeting.
Alright, thank, thank you, Stephen Barry.
Thank you, Steve. I I I really do appreciate that because it's not just us being able to stop or fee and say no, it's also. Inherent upon the applicant willing to be able to do that as well. Um, so I just wanna acknowledge that I I appreciate Attorney Cohen. Giving us that that ability to to examine some more documents between now and then.
I just, if if you need an extension of Catherine, could you just email that to me? That'd be great.
Great.
I I think we'll wind up doing that, uh, hopefully and um. Also, as I'm gonna say, so I. I'm gonna make a motion, we continue to our next meeting, which I know is sometime in August. Um. I can't tell you the exact date at the moment, not having it in front of me, but. Motion to continue into our next meeting in August.
I'll second that.
Great, uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry.
Hi. Point of vote. Oh, yes. Point of vote. Uh, I just wanna make it note or just make a note, I will be not be present for the August meeting. So, um, I'm not sure how you wanna proceed with that, obviously, uh. Uh, I've already informed staff, I will not be on the island for that. Or in a position to um, zoom in.
Alright, well, I I don't think, that's unfortunate, but I don't think we're in a position to 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 see this through now, so.
Right, I I do have a a question for staff, which is that uh, through Mr. You, Mr. Chairman, is this something that an alternate could be activated for?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
Great. Alright, so to continue where we are, I think uh, motion was made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Before I vote, can we just get the approvals and disapprovals or the denials? Of all the pools. For both sides, because I think that's kind of important for both of us, but otherwise, aye.
We're gonna have to track down. Sometimes things aren't always denied, oftentimes they're withdrawn without prejudice if it's headed in that direction to avoid. A denial being filed, so we'll have to do a bit of research on that.
Yep. Perfect.
No vacation few.
Oh, this is when I get back, August first, research.
I got it. We're gonna pile it up. Alright, Joe, you did vote, correct?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Nat.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Alright, thank you, Stephen.
Mr. Chairman, just, I just wanna say thank you to Joe because I would rather have sprung it on Megan tomorrow about what we kinda need.
She's gonna be gone.
I know, but.
Megan's flying to Ireland tomorrow and I'm disconnecting all devices.
I may get your vacation requested or uh, notices since Thursday.
There you go, or 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 it looks like Leslie's gonna just be doing a lot more triple duty at this point anyways. No, 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 no.
Alright, um. Thank you. On, on to the main event. Westmore Club, one oh five Westchester. Uh, is that you again, Stephen, correct?
It it is, it is, Mr. Chairman, uh, and I believe this one, uh, Paul Santos is joining me.
Really, really quickly on this one, I just wanna point out who's voting on this. It's John, Nat, Barry, Stephen and Carl. The floor is yours, Stephen.
Okay, so uh, just by way, uh, to refresh your recollection, there are. Three structures proposed here. One of them is a maintenance building on the Westchester side of the property. That is um, in a location that is currently used for exterior storage of uh, materials and equipment, so this would be putting those. Items inside, um, and then there is a new uh, relatively small cottage being proposed next to the. Tennis court, uh, existing uh, grass tennis courts, although we would actually move the slightly of the location of that fence to accommodate the. Um, wetland boundary and then there is a garage structure that's uh, ancillary to that that is. Um, was originally two stories, but is now one story and it would have two entrances. One of those would be for a. Residential motor vehicle and one would be for uh, the uh, landscaping equipment that would be kept in the in the um, club. Portion of it, um, so a little gar- a little garage. A little uh, maintenance building and and a cottage are the three structures that are that are being proposed here. Um, as you know, we have significantly uh, reduced the size of the structures and we've been working to try and make it um. Work uh, with the neighbors. Un- unfortunately, they don't wanna see this happen and and have told us basically there's nothing that's gonna. Satisfy them, which is, which is their prerogative. Um, we have gone through a process where the um. Vernal pool that is uh, significant wetland at the outskirts of this property and and on this property. Was originally done uh, using mathematical calculations um, at the Conservation Commission and we obtained a permit for that. Uh, and the neighbor appealed that permit, which is fine, but during the appeal process, there was a significant amount of rain. That demonstrated that the vernal pool was actually uh, bigger, which is again, fine, we were happy to use the the real number. And we've adjusted the plan to accommodate those wetland boundaries, uh, so we need to go back and adjust those. Wetland permits, but but the current plan is consistent with those, with those um, with the updated information. Um, for the, anybody who's gone out there and looked at this, you can see that um, it is not a. Uh, virgin piece of land that is now going to be destroyed to be used for for a cottage. It is um, land next to. A tennis court that is currently approved for use as a putting green. But is instead intended to be now being requested instead of being used as a putting green is uh, requested to be used for a cottage. But it is very neatly tucked into significant screening. There are, I don't know, maybe a dozen to twenty large. Uh, trees. I know the plan that Paul Santos submitted should identifies all those trees and the circumference of those trees showing how. Uh, thick they are and and dense they are, so our intent would be to uh, post-construction, maybe fill in. Some spots to make sure that there's better screening, but but not to remove any of those uh, during construction or after. Uh, so that this building would be uh, essentially not obtrusive in any way. It's only uh, you know, twenty-two feet tall. It's only. Fourteen hundred something square feet, uh, four bedrooms, two of which are in the basement, uh, very small uh, bridge height on this. Um, and importantly, limited to um, only um, not only employee housing, but single-family housing. So it would not be a dorm, it would not be a rental, a short-term rental, a long-term rental, anything like that. It would be only for employee housing. Um. The other uh, si- so I I do wanna thank uh, last week or last month, rather. Uh, Attorney Bailey gave a uh, very good presentation about uh, the the horrors of the Westmore Club. About how it has tennis courts and a recreation center and ample parking. Um, I think it was nice of him to. To point out uh, that the, that we have something like a hundred and seventy-six parking spaces, most of which is actually just grass. Um, but uh, some of it is paved. Um, and you know, the club basically operates now in a way that has no problems, right? There's no. Um, noise uh, complaints, there's no zoning problems, there's no. Um, you know, in two thousand eighteen, we underwent a very significant review by the board. A new set of rules was put in place and we feel that since since those rules were put in place. All of the nuisances that were previously causing problems have been mitigated down to a level where we have a good relationship with the neighbors. Um, and what we'd like to do is is keep that and go forward as as proposed. The um. Board requested at the last meeting that we conduct an audit of the um, existing conditions. As you know, there are twelve. Uh, or actually thirteen, uh, twelve, one permit and twelve modifications of that permit in existence. Most of which are very minor, some of which are COVID-related, but two or three of which were were decent-sized changes to the permit. Um, so I submitted a uh, extensive uh, assessment of that to the staff on Friday. Um, that was for their use. We do not uh, claim that the um, self-audited. Um, review by us is is, you know, something that the staff should rely on, but I believe that the staff has done a. Significant assessment based on the, on what we we provided. It it has um. All all the information from all the permits and a response as to why we're in compliance and I think, I don't know if the board has seen that or not yet, or if the staff is still working with it, but. You know, I think it it demonstrates that there's really um, substantial compliance with the terms and conditions that have been put in place. And I know that Paul Santos has submitted um. Uh, site materials that demonstrate that as well. The, the one issue that did turn up while we were doing the compliance uh, assessment is that. In one of the uh, employee dorm special permits, there was a cap on employee housing occupancy that was put at eighty. I think that was a somewhat arbitrary cap. I don't actually remember where that number comes from. It doesn't seem to fit anything. Um, that was uh, that we, that, you know, it doesn't match something like occupancy of the, uh, the actual occupancy of the structures, which is actually like. A hundred and ten people, um, but we actually have eighty-six employees in there and I think ninety-three people. So we are slightly over that cap. Um, we do intend to fix that um, first by coming to the board to seek relief. And if the board determines otherwise, we would come into compliance with whatever uh, would be needed, but I just, I do wanna point out. That there is a minor non-compliance with that again, um. Eighty-six employees and ninety-three people, the other, the other people are direct family members. They are not non-employees, they're just. Oh, they're not employees, but they're family members and employees. And I think actually, that might have been the issue is that the. The the couch didn't accommodate for family members and and some of those things. But anyway, um, our intent would be to come in, uh, you know, probably at the August meeting with a request to alter that cap. Um, and then whatever the board decides the cap is, we'd certainly be coming to compliance with. Um, so I think, you know, frankly, I was a little nervous and I'm pretty happy that that that's the uh, the only thing that turned up and. I think that the board has enough information now to make its decision. Uh, I know that uh, you know, Attorney Bailey had suggested that there was not uh, an open space compliance. And I think that Paul Santos, I know Paul Santos submitted information that shows that we have a fifty-eight point six percent uh, um. Uh, open space now and it 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 will drop down to fifty-six point eight percent after what's being proposed, which is, you know. A hundred and fifty percent roughly more than what's required. The the permit uh, the bylaw only requires twenty percent open space. Uh, I do wanna note that substantial amount of that open space is sport courts, like tennis courts and. Grass croquet courts and grass uh, tennis courts. So you know, that's about as, if we included those. Uh, if we didn't include those, we'd be much, much higher, but um, under the bylaw, sport courts are counted against open space, so we calculated it that way. Um. We have also submitted a su- a substantial amount of information about the drainage and other technical, the driveway and other technical information. And Paul has worked out with the fire department that they would prefer to see the access. Um, well, they don't really care where we do the access, the access, we wanna do the access along the existing uh, cart path. Uh, that's there now so that there's not a disturbance on the northern line of the property. Um, but the fire department would like an emergency access line there, so we would do what the board has done in the past, which is to have that. Access created and installed, but fenced off with some, you know, split rail fence that the the fire department would just blow through if they needed to. Um, but that that would not actually be used for any other purpose except for emergency vehicle access, you know, uh, ambulance or fire or police, whatever. Uh, but it would otherwise be closed off. So I I think that that emergency vehicle access and the audit and the um. Uh, drainage information that the Paul submitted uh, satisfy all of the needs that the board has and all the questions that the board had. And all of the technical information. Uh, and I'm happy to answer questions and Paul is available to run you through any, anything that you want. I do think he wanted to speak briefly on the, on the technical stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Paul, do you uh, you have some words or?
Sure, I'll, I'll be, excuse me, I'll try to be brief. Um, just to clarify um, on the open space. So there's two provisions in the zoning bylaw with regard to open space. There is a specific provision in the MCD. Requirements under one thirty-nine eleven E. And then there's an open area requirement. Under one thirty-nine sixteen, um. Both are pretty much in line, um, but to, just to clarify, because it might have been a little bit confusing the way Stephen was describing it. Um, game playing courts are excluded from open space. Uh, there's no designation, whether a grass court or a clay court. Any game playing court is excluded from open space and that has been the requirement. In what we have done since the original two thousand and four, two thousand and three permit. That none of the game playing courts, whether they are um, clay. Um, hardcore or grass, that those, none of those have been counted in the open space. Um, the only. Provision that you have um. With regard to any areas that are impervious, buildings are excluded, uh, parking is excluded. The game playing courts are excluded. You are allowed to include um, brick walkways. Up to ten percent of your total lot area. Um, there are brick walkways out here. I have included them in the open space and we do not approach anywhere near the ten percent. Um, requirement to be met. The total lot area, when we look at both. The Westmore Lot and the Dukster Lot, which essentially is what makes up the entire Westmore Club. Uh, is approximately six hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square feet. Um, the open space that Steve had said. Following the provisions of the bylaw, or currently we're at fifty-eight point eight percent. Uh, the proposed improvements that they're proposing here would bring us down to fifty-six point eight percent. I mean, there's a large area just of the wetland. Um, to the west of the existing, uh, to the east of the existing cottage. And then the area, there's a large area too around the the Dukster Lot, but we still have a lot of interior uh, green space. Not including patios, not including structures, basically um, true green space. Uh, on the interior of the lot. Uh, the other issue was at the prior, uh, prior to the last meeting, I think we had. Stated that there was an excess of twenty open space, I think in some of the paperwork that had been submitted. Um, but I submitted the actual um, numbers and and added them to the density calculation table that was provided as part of these plans. Um, at the last, prior to the last meeting too, I had um, sent an email um. To staff saying that, once we had filed with the DEP with regard to um. The site plan and the stormwater report, that we would provide that to staff um. For Ed Pesci to do his own internal review if if he so desired as part of um. Any planning board uh, review and approval and I I have done that also, so. The plans that were prepared for the DEP as part of the superseding order of conditions. Um, requirements along with the stormwater report um, has also been submitted, uh, has been submitted to staff. And the final issue would be um, the issue of um. Uh, the access for the fire department. Again, I've met on the site a few times with um, with Joe Townsend from the fire department. Uh, because the site is technically considered um, somewhat remote under both the state and local regulations. Um, provided there are some provisions that can be met, um, or additional things that we, you would typically do not under a standard. Um, single-family home. Uh, those would be adding, in this particular case, sprinkling the building. Uh, extending the water main and providing, providing a fire hydrant. Um, in in a general location of the existing structure. That the fire department can um, reduce requirements such as um, driveway width. Um. Uh, in things along that nature. So we are providing a sprinkler system, providing a hydrant um, with water service. Uh, to the site and in lieu of that also, um. Creating the access along that northerly boundary as opposed to trying to upgrade that existing driveway that currently accessed the site. Um, so the dr- the driveway that accessed the site. Was looked at for emergency use at the time. Was looked at for emergency use at the time the original club was prepared. But from what we can gather, it was probably looked at only for. An ambulance, only because the only reason that any type of emergency vehicles typically might have to get down to that lower section would be to. Get down there and provide assistance to anybody that may have an issue on the courts. So. We will provide a a letter from the fire department. Providing that they have sufficient. Grade. And access. To to provide fire service and get the trucks to a spot. That they need to be at this particular location to provide ample. Fire protection for the dwelling. I think that's basically it. Most of this kind of the discussion here just referenced around the cottage. There obviously the the issue with the maintenance building. We, I think we had talked about that at the at the previous meeting. And I think that's about it. I'm sure I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. During the discussion.
Great. Thank thank you, Paul. Board members, questions? John.
Not so much questions. I just wanted to. Follow up. We had a request for the last meeting or an idea to go over, see the site visit and maybe get. A detailed tour of what they were proposing and how. Everything planned was planned, and I have to say I was very impressed. We, I had gone over with Carl. We had multiple timeframes so that we didn't have a quorum and. Looking at not only what was proposed, but also trying to look. From the neighbors of butters, their perspective, looking at how everything was placed height. Landscaping and I really, I tried to find opposition. Just to create some kind of question and. I really didn't. I I aside from coming back multiple times for amendments to the the prior approvals. Which we know that's been a bone of contention. Aside from that. I really didn't have any problem with these applications and I and I agree with contrary to. The proposal of the putting green, which I think that they are still in favor or they still have timeframe if they wanted to act on that. I think the the cottage was proposed in that tucked back tree line area there. Does not offend any of the neighbors, but even directly on that pilgrim as it's very well screened. So. I I tried to ask the right questions, see what they were doing and taking it from a neighbor's perspective and I was, I'm I'm happy to report. For for one board member, I was very satisfied and I appreciate the time. We spent about an hour there, so it's not like it was just a five minute quick. You know, view, but that's all I wanted to say. I was pleasantly surprised. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, John. Barry.
You can let Carl go. That's okay.
I was gonna let you go first, Barry, because you had your hand up before me.
That's okay. You went out with John though, so I think.
Just to to echo John's feelings, I felt pretty much the same way and. I read all the are all the letters of the neighbors, which I have done pretty much all the time, especially for this application. A gentleman brought up the pickleball courts being noisy. And I suggested to management on the site visit some fixes for the fencing. Around those courts to. Hopefully mitigate, you know, a very high percentage of the noise. The way they've got the fencing now versus what we we sort of talked about briefly about fixing the fencing to enclose the noise more. If you go down Pilgrim Road and you look west toward the club. The screening is fantastic and the only thing I could see was the top of the flagpole, which is down. In the lawn lawn court area. There are at least ten or twelve or fifteen mature trees there. Blocking the view of the courts and 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 a cottage that would have a modest ridge height of twenty two feet. The vernal pool being down there and looking at the side of the cottage. Moved west, they moved the fencing. Of the courts west and move the cottage plan west of the buffer zone. It's well out of the buffer zone of the vernal pool wetland. So it was a productive hour and with some mitigation on the pickleball courts, I think. That was a concern that I had respecting the neighbors. Concerns. There could be a simple fix with fencing on the pickleball courts to. You know, to greatly reduce the noise of the pickleballs and they are, they are as referenced, thinking of different paddles, which should be different types. That would reduce the noise further. So there's some mitigation going on there that could happen. And. You know, I think the. The impacts of these three proposals are. Are are pretty, pretty reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Barry.
I I do have some comments, but I think I'd like to, if there's no further comment from the board, I'd really like to hear from the public.
Perfect. Meg.
Yes, Sarah Alger.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sarah Alger, Dan Bailey, who I think is also here. And I represent a number of neighbors and abutters. The champions at four old west four, Westmore Farm Road. Mr. Formella at eight Westmore Farm Road. Peter Holly and Carolyn Lamb at twenty four Pilgrim Road, Michael and Jane Gato at ninety two Cliff Road and Tom Holland at thirty Pilgrim Road. I just want to say, I I'm. Really sort of shocked to hear about all these materials that have been submitted. I don't know if you've had an opportunity as a board to review them. I'm just hearing about them. We submitted. Our materials for the deadline. That deadline was over a week ago. We submitted our materials on June twenty ninth. There was nothing in the packet that was responsive to what the board asked for at the last meeting. And I'm hearing, I haven't seen any of these things, but I'm hearing now that. Mr. Santos submitted significant materials. I gather Mr. Cohen submitted some extensive assessment on Friday. I haven't seen that. I did see a response to Mr. Bailey's materials that was sent at four twenty seven. PM this afternoon after this meeting started. I'm I'm just, I'm just really surprised because we provided copies of what. We submitted to Mr. Cohen. We weren't given the courtesy of the same replies, so we haven't been able to see anything. So just on the basis of that, in fairness, I think this entire matter should be. Continued until your next meeting. But. In addition to that. Hearing Mr. Santos say that he's had these meetings with the fire department and that all these. Site changes need to be made to address the fire department concerns. I think those are things that you as a board should see on a plan that should be submitted and reviewed. The letter from the fire department that's being promised, a a plan that shows the changes that are going to be made to the site. To address the fire department concerns. And. We we would like to be able to look at the open space. Open area calculation, understand how that's been done and what's been included. Mr. Cohen stated that. The club has a great relationship with its neighbors and yet. You know, there are. Ten neighbors here with concerns, so. I I I just, I really actually don't, I'm kind of at a loss as to what to say. I think the assessment that's been provided, I haven't seen it. But I would suggest that as part of the MCD that should go to Mr. Pesci for his review. I think that's what you normally do with. That kind of assessment that's provided and. Finally, the to hear. That they're out of compliance because of employee housing. When the very application that's before you is for the addition of employee housing. Is really concerning. I don't see how this board can grant a modification to this special permit. Increasing the cap. Without increasing the cap on employee housing, how can you approve additional employee housing when they're currently. In violation of the cap that you previously imposed on employee housing. It it's mystifying to me. So if they're coming in. In August. With an MCD application, I I don't know if that's been filed yet. I think we're past the filing deadline, but I I know there's some wiggle room there, but. Why should, why wouldn't this all be done at one time? I I just think it would be inappropriate for you to grant this request at this meeting at a time. When they're asking for additional employee housing and yet they're already over a cap that they have to come in. And modify. And that's, I guess, that's all I have to say. I I know Dan probably has more coherent. Comments to make than I do, so I will stop talking.
Thank you, Sarah. Board members, do we have anyone else in the public? Meg. Dan out there?
Yes, we have Dan Bailey and then Virginia Chase.
Great. Welcome, Dan.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask Megan a favor. Megan, do you have those plans that I submitted the other day? Those, these are the plans that were submitted to DEP, and if you have those, can you share them?
Do you have them readily available?
I can't share, but I could send them to you.
Right, so I was gonna say I can bring you over as a panelist instead so that you can share, or if you wouldn't mind to send to me, so it'll just be on the top of my inbox. I could do it.
I'll do that right now. Hold on. Yeah, I know you've been sort of in and out, so. Bear with me, everybody, but it's it's actually sort of amazing how quickly you can do this. Hey, they are on the way. And while we're waiting for those. I can just. Go back and, you know, there's just following a little bit on what Sarah said. You know, one of our clients' big concerns with the Westmore is the lack of transparency. And that's just what we're getting here right now. And. You know, we heard about arbitrary and capricious in the last discussion. Well, I'm gonna use that term myself. Because if you were to close this hearing tonight with all of the information that's outstanding. And I could, you've got a letter from me talking about things, you know, on the. MCD permit requirements that haven't been submitted nor have waivers been requested. I I don't. Know whether the materials that were submitted the other day include those things, including, you know, things like cross sections of access ways. I mean, obviously, the fire department was not happy with what was proposed as the accessway. You've got two ninety degree turns in there and it's a gravel, narrow gravel road, so certainly the proposed emergency access is an improvement from. You know, from a safety perspective. Thank you. And yeah, go down to the next one, please. So I'll I'll get to that in a second. But. You know, just to echo what Sarah had to say. Well, I know what I wanted to go back to and and, you know, Attorney Cohen mentioned this. The reason that this has taken as long as it has. Is because we appealed, my clients appealed. The order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. That appeal was taken in December, early January. DEP had a site visit in March. On March fifteenth, sixteenth or seventeenth. DEP directed the applicant to provide additional information. That additional information was not provided until roughly a month ago, some of it. The completion of it wasn't provided until last week, and this is one of the plans that was submitted to DEP. When that information was submitted. The vernal pool boundary changed by eight feet. So it wasn't close. You know, we hired a consultant and he picked up on it in about five seconds that it wasn't close and wasn't correct. So it's disingenuous for the club, and I know wetlands aren't your thing. We'll deal with them with the with the Concom. But it's disingenuous for the club to come in here and say, well, you know, we we just got it wrong because it was the time of season. No, they're very carefully prescribed rules about how you measure a vernal pool. They didn't follow them. You know, that's a constant theme here. It's more of my theme and letters that I've written is they haven't followed the rules. It's a major commercial development project. You have rules and regulations that apply. You either make them. Submit to those rules or you waive them. Now, if you look at the plan that I just, you know, that's up on the screen, and I know it's small and it's hard to see, but the point that I want to make is. You know, Attorney Cohen describes this as a relatively minor project. And in some senses, he is correct. It is not a big house. It is in an area that is previously disturbed. But in order to get access and utilities to this location, you are first, if you look, you know, where the emergency access now will be, I think. From Westmore Lane to the house, you can see a, it's a straight shot of several hundred feet. That's where the water and sewer have to come in. Okay, so you've got some pretty significant disturbance coming in that way. The electric comes in on the existing. Gravel path, which comes in from the south, so that is also going to have to be disturbed. And then if you look at this. Plan that was submitted to DP, and I think it's probably been submitted to you by now. It's very busy in front of that house. You've got stormwater. Drainage facilities, you've got utility connections. Okay, I guess the fire department has looked at this and is is. Satisfied that it can get in there and turn vehicles around. I don't see how, but you know, I'm not gonna second guess the fire department if it's satisfactory to them. But the point is. This, this is not minor. This is a significant disturbance. You know, if it's the sense of the board that you are going to approve the house. At the very least, we ask that you make sure that it all complies with the requirements of the MCD and the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Who else was in the public? Meg.
So we have quite a few people now. We have Virginia Chase, followed by Jane Gato, Princess Farrell, then Peter Howe.
Yeah, great. Just to remind everyone, let's try not to repeat what the what the previous speaker said. Virginia, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Virginia Chase, one seventeen West Chester Street. I'm tempted to say if you're going to continue this, that I will hold my remarks until the next meeting. But should I say that or should I just go ahead?
I would go ahead because that's yet to be seen.
All right. Last, the last meeting, you spoke about a review of the special permit to see if the club. Was in compliance. And I know that the attorney. Cohen did address that somewhat, but at the time there was a mention of the buffer around that was supposed to be. Part of the, it was supposed to be a buffer around the whole Westmore Club. And I think that has is not there anymore. I don't know if anyone's looked into that. Okay. Now. About, I was surprised to hear that he said there were no noise complaints because the neighbors on West Chester. Street have spoken to me. Almost every week about the noise and it's not just one, it's not just my neighbor across the street. Mr. McCarrow, it's the neighbors down the street and I told them how to write to the board and they've written. So I think if you check, you'll see there's a lot more complaints. About the noise because of pickleball. And also they. They are also against this cottage going up because it's an expansion and people don't want. The club to expand anymore. None of the neighbors do. I mean, we. We were told when this first came about. That if we have a problem, we come to you and and. That if we have a problem, we come to you, and and all the neighbors have come to you this time. If you look. It, or the majority. Have spoken, you know, some have the attorney, but the, everyone else writes and attends the meetings and speaks. And um. So I think really you should. Think about. The the neighbor's point of view rather than just how things fit or don't fit. But um, you know, the expansion is a problem for everybody that lives around it. Um, and. And. Attorney Cohen mentioned that this cottage was employee housing. Uh, at the time. It was proposed, I didn't s- somebody say that was only management housing? There is a difference between employee housing and management, and uh. I I don't think that should be overlooked either. Let's see, um. The complaints, the noise complaints are mostly about paddleball. They're about paddleball. They're, it's so noisy and ridiculous, and it goes on all day. Now, there are, there are some paddleball sites down by Westchester, and that's bothering the whole street. And then there's a paddleball site up near my house, which is up. Uh. Towards, more towards Cliff Road. And. I hear it now. It's very noisy, but I thought a compromise for the noise. Of the paddleballs would be to move all the paddleballs up into, up near my house, because it doesn't bother me. I either have the windows closed or I'm at the beach, so. The, then, all the neighbors on Westchester. Would stop complaining, and I, and it doesn't bother me. So that is a compromise for the paddleball, but it's, it's. It's really st- disturbing the people that live on Westchester. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. I I don't want to disclaim the the impact um on people, but thi- this. This application is really about these structures and not so much about the paddleboard and and other things, so if we could really just direct our comments towards what's what's at hand. Um, that would be appreciated. Um. And Jane?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Um, I'm Jane Gato from ninety-two Cliff Road. I just want to address some important items. Um. Attorney Cohen said that nothing will satisfy the neighbors, and that is. Absolutely not true. We have repeatedly asked for transparency and compliance and a complete and adequate application into the planning department. So it's not that nothing will satisfy us, but we cannot continue to discuss this without transparency. And at the very last meeting in July, it was the planning board that requested a compliance review. And I can't believe we're even sitting here at another hearing. Without that having been shared out of respect for. Everyone that is participating in this process, so. You know. I will, I will let everybody else talk, and and I don't think I have anything new to say besides that, but it's kind of a. Propostuous idea that this would. Be decided today without the chance to review. That information, which we've been asking for, for, I don't know, nine months perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Wh- when it comes to the compliance review, I think we we should make it clear that that Stephen. Did a one on his own, but planning staff has not had an opportunity yet to do a compliance review, and and I think. That's a, that's a little bit down the road, so um just with staffing issues and other things, so um. Just, just to get that out there and made that understood. Uh.
Why?
Uh, Stephen?
Why were Stephen?
Stephen Cohen.
Uh, well, I I would defer to Francis Farrell and any of the other neighbors first.
Right, perfect. Francis?
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can.
Uh. I would, two points. I would echo uh. Attorney uh Elger's comment that uh references have been made to lots of drawings and materials submitted, but I haven't seen anything, and. How can we have a really clear discussion on this matter without? The 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 details, other than what Mr. Cohen is just explaining to us over the video. The second point is um. Uh, is the, my concern is with this ac- proposed access. To the, the cottage. Uh. Uh. I I live uh in this area here, and um I had spoken to the owner of the club. Graham Goldsmith, and he had indicated to me he would. Use his existing driveway. To use for access to his cottage. Then the fire department came in and and raised concerns. Uh, to to be very brief here, uh. Common sense suggests that to build this access as proposed now. Is going to require time and expense and materials. That I would ask the board to consider perhaps having the club put into improving the existing driveway to make that satisfy the fire department. Uh, eh eh. This proposed new driveway uh is really an intrusion. On the property, this, the south property line of neighbors along there. Earlier, it was said the fire depart, one of the concerns of the fire department is a a a sharp right angle turn. To have access. To this cottage. Um, I can tell you unequivocally that to go up Westmore Lane and to uh turn east. Uh, uh, on this proposed driveway access. Uh, to get to the cottage is the sharpest of right turns you could possibly make. So uh, the current design, as far as I can tell, without seeing any materials, has certain flaws in it. Well, I shouldn't say flaws, it. Questions. Uh. And finally, if if this proposed driveway goes in, it's going to ruin, destroy, I shouldn't say destroy, it's going to affect. The the status quo of vegetation. There's a hedge that will. Likely be. Uh. Affected, if not destroyed, a a beautiful hedge that is going to change the screening and the whole complexion. Uh, of the area there, so uh to 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 summarize, if there is a way to uh. Use the existing driveway, the monies and the effort to. To to draw, to creating this proposed driveway, I would su- submit to the board to ask to see whether or not. The existing driveway could not be modified to satisfy uh the fire de. Fire department. Uh, yeah, ask that question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Francis. Peter? We can't, we can't hear you, Peter. Hmm. Um, I see you're unmuted.
Oh. Can, can you hear me now?
I can, yes, thank you.
It was a, just. Equipment malfunction on my end. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, it, I'm. I'm, I'm very concerned. And I have been from the beginning. Uh, with the safety issues, and as you all may know, I wrote. Uh, to you in February of last year. Uh, many, many months ago about the access issues, which are now just being. Addressed apparently. And so far today, uh, we haven't seen this letter. We don't know what the letter says, except in the most general terms from the fire department. Uh, and how that letter, uh, you know, what what has to be built other than a a gate, apparently someplace not well-defined? Uh, but presumably beyond that gate and between the gate and the house. Something else needs to go in because it's, if it's on the north border of. The lot, the two lots that are traversed, um, that has some pretty severe uh decline in angle of attack for. Uh, vehicles. Now, uh, y- y- one could be, uh, you know. Critical of why I'm complaining and raising this issue. It's it's a very personal matter for me. My son is a first responder. And uh, I. I don't think our fire department, I don't think our ambulance service is here, that those individuals should risk their uh beings and their equipment. Um, uh, with, without a proper plan, and apparently that is now. After months, what is it, six months, five months later, uh, just being addressed. Uh, by, by the club, and uh, the fire department is responding, so the the. Short point I want to make is. Uh, these drawings that you see before you, uh, just the ones that were most recently sent to the D E P. Uh. They can't uh be complete without this new information. Uh, that apparently is forthcoming. From the fire department. And as uh some of my neighbors have said. It's kind of hard to understand how the board can come to a conclusion today. Based on the lack of all of the information that you've been told about. Has now sort of been submitted, is sort of forthcoming, uh, but who knows when? So I would encourage you uh to continue this to the next meeting. Uh, on the condition that all this information is A submitted and the information that's appropriate be made public. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Meg, do we have anyone else in the public?
Yes, Thomas Holland.
Right. Welcome, Thomas.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. Uh, thank you for uh hearing my comments. Um, my, my concerns with this um issue are sort of related to the fact that we've uh not had any transparency. Um, and the story keeps changing. Um, you know, we are very reasonable people, uh, and we are interested in in some sort of a solution here, but. But where things really fall down for for me. Is in relation to the environmental issues. Um, now, I know at the last meeting, uh. It was said, uh, that, you know, environmental issues aren't necessarily the the purview of the planning board. And I appreciate that. But it does raise the question. Uh, that I've had in many conversations is um. Is is this not relevant to the overall decision? Uh, with, for this particular application? Let let me just briefly explain. Um, back in December, the original application uh contained uh diagrams of the house and the. Wetland borders, which literally were within inches. Of the front uh stoop of this house. Um. In the intervening period, as you've heard. Um, both the Massachusetts State Department of Environmental Protection. Is now concerned about the details of this application. And we have now learned subsequently that the details provided in the original application. By the applicant. Were miscalculated by some seven to nine feet. Uh, which is a dramatic change and would imply that the house was actually sitting well within. The setback on the vernal pool. Um. I think this is important because the drawings that were just submitted for tonight's application contain the. From what I can see. Virtually the same. Description. Of the house still bang up against the fence of the tennis court. And yet the vernal pool boundary. Which is now nine, seven to nine feet adrift. Uh, is still located in the exact same place running along the front stoop of the house. So. It's to me a good example. Of how we do need a little more clarification and a little more detail. So that we can all make a very sound decision. Um, I guess by now you're aware that. Uh, without the D E P. Approving this project. Um, I I gather this is um going to prevent any building permits to be issued. And we also now know that with the. Uh, State's Department of Environmental Protection involved, that the. Decisions made by the Concom. Which originally, as we know, was an approval. Was based on in inaccurate information, and that they're going to have to. Review this case as well. Before any building permits can be issued, so. My point tonight is that we really. Are lacking a lot of clarity, a lot of detail, and I think it's premature to uh to proceed at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Meg, do we have?
Yep, we have Dan Bailey.
Righty. Welcome back, Dan.
Yeah, and and I just uh want to mention there's another client, uh, Jean Francois Formella, who is trying to get in, but he's having trouble. Uh, so Megan, if.
I see him on here. Let me see.
There he is.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'll be very brief. Uh, I'll just ask a few questions that maybe you can address uh either today or later. Uh, regarding the open space, how can hard-surface tennis courts be counted as open space if they are impervious? So that's just a question. And it goes back to the point that has been made by some of my neighbors about compliance. We would love to see if, in fact, uh, the overall club is compliant at this stage, given the growth over the past ten years. Um, the club has already built housing for eighty people. How will four bedrooms address the uh growing? Or what seems to be the ever-growing needs of the club? Uh, and certainly why pick that location to just have that tiny marginal increase in supposedly housing uh for employees? Uh, regarding the access, there is, there is no access road, real access road right now. How will construction be handled and how much disruption, given the fact that there is very limited access to the site? Uh, regarding the no rental restrictive covenant? How will it be enforced, and what recourse do we have as neighbors? Given the history of the club of pushing the envelope? And then regarding the trees? How can we enforce and be a hundred percent certain that no trees will be touched for the same reason that I just mentioned? Uh, should you approve that house, which of course we're not in favor of? Uh, what penalty can be agreed upon preapproval to make sure that the agreement is respected and the screening is is respected? Thank you.
Thank you. Meg, is that it?
Yep, that's all.
Um. Hi, Stephen, you want to jump in and try to address some of the questions?
Uh, I I do, um, and I'll try to not re- repeat things, but um I do want to state. Uh, that the, just for clarification, I think both Paul Santos and I said it, that the courts are not counted as the open space requirement, even though. Many of them are grass and whatever, uh, they are counted as as structure, so they are excluded from the open space calculation. Um. The, um. Suggestions by uh Jean Francois Formella uh about, well, how do you do enforcement? How do you do this? You know, like this. Board has standard conditions that deal with all of things, these things all the time, every day, and easily could be put into conditions for compliance. Um, I really don't have any, any concern with that. Some of that would require uh a, you know, for example, if there was a. Concern about how the construction protocols would be done, this board regularly requires pre-construction meetings. To make sure that those concerns are addressed. That's not something that the board deals with. It's done through staff. It's a standard condition. Uh, the board is regularly granted enforcement authority, uh, or the town is granted enforcement authority. Uh, and um certific, annual certifications can be required, uh, all, all, all kinds of things like that. Uh. I I think in general, this idea that the board is trying to uh obso- obfuscate uh or not be transparent, I think is really. Not correct. You know, we are trying to be as responsive as possible. We, um, the, the, the club. Submitted information has been responsive by updating and and revising that information as we've gone along. And we have consistently made filings to show that. We have also, um, you know, consistently filed information that is publicly available. The only thing that I haven't filed with the public is the uh document that I gave to the staff, and I put in the email that I gave to the staff. Was that this is intended to be helpful to the staff. It is not intended to be a determinative document. If they wanted to share, put it in the M C D file, that was their. Uh, prerogative. It was authorized. If they wanted to share with the board, they were welcome to. We weren't requesting any. Privacy or anything like that, but that, but that the, ultimately, the review of compliance is something that should be done by the staff, and we were just trying to make it a little easier for them. Um. Whether or not the uh club is in compliance with its uh existing permits is somewhat irrelevant here, like the board really is just supposed to answer the questions that are in front of it. Um. And if there are other issues, those are handled separately, and we are happy to come in and and deal with the employee housing number separately. Um, obviously, with regard to the house that's being applied for here, we would expect a condition. Uh, that limits the number of people that can stay at that house, and that addresses just the housing that's applied for here, and anything that's handled separately would would be handled separately. We wouldn't ask you to deal with. The other employee housing in this matter, because it's not before you, but we intend to come in before you for that, uh, likely at the next meeting, maybe. for that, likely at the next meeting, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure when we'll file that, but quickly, I think is the answer. The other thing I want to take issue with, and I'm really very, very disappointed that I have to say this, but the professionals that did the vertical assessment are licensed professionals who I think have outstanding reputations in our community. Frankly, are on this call and should be really insulted by the way they've been talked about as as making mistakes and submitting false information and all those kind of things. That is not the case. If anyone who said things knew what they were talking about, okay, they would understand that what happens is when you have drought conditions, which Nantucket up until last year had ten-year drought conditions. There are formulas that are used to calculate vernal pools and groundwater levels and other things that substitute for actual numbers when there's a drought condition. And those are regularly used by the professionals that file applications with the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission has very experienced staff and consultants that review that information and approve it. And in this case, reviewed it and approved it. The only difference we have here is that after the appeal was filed, there was a significant amount of rain that broke those drought conditions, and we were able to move from a regulatory formula to an actual assessment. So it's not that there was a mistake. It's not something was done, you know, whatever. We went from doing calculations to doing actual measurements, and we're happy to make the adjustment. And the plan that you have before you reflects the adjustment of both the vernal pool boundary and adjustment to the fence line to move it over. So the reason why it looks the same is that both things have moved. The fence has moved and the vernal pool has moved and the house has moved. So it looks the same because everything has moved essentially in proportion. I think the board has all of the information in front of it that it needs, and also this this idea with the emergency vehicles. First of all, the fire truck is not going to come up Cliff Road. That's not how the fire department works. The fire department has fixed routes that it uses based on, you know, knowing how the island works. The fire department comes up Westchester Street if it has to get to the club, not Cliff Road. So the fire department would come up Westchester Street, would make a not that hard right turn at the emergency access area that's being that's that's being proposed here and would have quick access to the property. The idea that instead the fire truck should drive through the middle of the property where it would highly likely endanger pedestrians and club members on an area would have to make two turns. That is not a safe way to adjust this plan. I I I appreciate that people want to throw as much mud at the wall to see what sticks, but I I really don't appreciate it when people make comments that are not factually true and are disparaging to the to the professionals that we work with here, that that really spend a lot of time trying to get this right. And I know that Paul Santos has worked with Joe Townsend to really nail this down. And, you know, typically, this board issues M C D permits that have a list of conditions with them, and those conditions are how some of this stuff gets cleaned up. So, you know, should the board approve this tonight? I think it has all the information to both close the public hearing and to issue a decision. And that decision would include conditions prior to the issuance of a building permit and some of them prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy that that would make sure that everything that's needed is in place for public safety, for enforcement, for environmental issues, to the extent you want to be involved. This board is expert at doing that, and I have full faith that you can and will close the public hearing and issue an approval that has appropriate conditions to deal with everything that we've talked about tonight and at the last few meetings. And and just to clarify the question that the Virginia Chase raised about is this employee housing or management housing? It is it is employee housing in the sense that that is the consistent term that has been used in other permits and in restrictions. However, it is intended to be used as management housing, which is why it's also being limited to single-family dwelling as opposed to dormitory. So that that I think hopefully clarifies that that situation. So I I think the board should close the public hearing and should issue a affirmative decision with appropriate conditions, and that's what I'd request. Unless a board member or the staff determines that there is information that is still outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions. Are we are we clear on on the public, Meg?
Um, no, we have two handgeries. If you're taking a second round of comments, Thomas Holland and Francis Farrell.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna hold off if it's people that have already talked. I'm gonna let Stephen speak and then we'll come back.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. First, I'd just like to say I appreciate the, we had other board members who bended a site and their observations. I think, you know, knowing a club is well-run, at least without word appearances, you know, it makes a difference if things aren't aren't well-run. You wonder what you're not being shown. In any event, some comments on the dwelling. This was originally presented as a cottage for Mr. Goldsmith and family and at times upper-level staff. I have no issue with that, except given circumstances at the club, it seems some reasonable restrictions are in order. Staff had recommended a handful of those. I'd like to focus on the number of occupants. And I'd like to add a bedroom count. The first floor is more than a couple thousand square feet with a full basement indicated by exterior stairs and window wells and a second story presumed. Since only one bedroom is shown and it's on the first floor. I believe staff suggested limitation on the number of occupants with a limit of eight, which seems reasonable. But so is a restriction on the number of bedrooms. Bedrooms are more easily measured than the number of occupants and they trigger other reasonable requirements. So under the circumstances, I think these two tools paired seem like a good idea. Comments on the M C D. If I understand correctly, this application is an expansion of the M C D and therefore other M C D matters, including if any of non-compliance or longstanding complaints are fair game. I'm disturbed by neighbors' longstanding reports about noise amplified caused by sports courts, et cetera. On this particular application, the cottage, and in all future applications, I'd strongly support whatever steps can be taken to reasonably quiet activities. I understand that some of the homes were built after the fact, you know, buy land next to the airport and put up a house and complain about the airport. This isn't this isn't all that, and there have been expansions. I'm not going to get into the pickleball noise that's turning out to be a national discussion, quite surprisingly, by the way. Any event, sound attention was mentioned tonight already, which I brought up at the last meeting, too. There's some opportunity to this areas that Carl identified and probably more without much difficulty locating them. I would urge the applicant to pursue those. On noise in relation to the cottage, if A C compressors are in any way going to contribute to the sound profile traveling off-site, I think they should be strategically strategically located physically and with an eye on attenuation materials so that they're not adding to the sound issues. A noise in relation to the maintenance garage, I realize it's a small facility, but it seems reasonable. There'd be some limitations on hours. On the old matter of overall compliance, I understand an internal review is not practical at the moment. I believe when it eventually occurs, there may be another bite at the be a good neighbor apple. And obviously encourage the applicant through their agent and otherwise to be acting on that in advance of any internal review or complaints being brought in that rise to re-review the M C D. And then just before signing off, like physically as a vote, I I would like some clarification from fire directly and have that reflected in our site plan. So those are my comments. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Well thought out as always. I'm going to go back to Francis. If Francis could please not repeat himself and try to make it short. Thanks. Welcome back, Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
It this might be all me, all my fault. Has it the drawings that have been referenced today? And that has, it's been explained by various people, been submitted. Has this been put in the public packet? Did I miss this or is that there or not? Or was someone know that answer?
Meg would have the answer for that.
It was not included in the packet. These were all emails received end of week throughout the weekend that were received after the packet was posted.
Okay, thank you, Megan. So you can appreciate, Mr. Chairman, neighbors disappointment at a lack of information of things that are of a really important consequence. The second point I would like to make is just to repeat to the board that could it be a condition that it be discussed, it be looked at, it be researched, that the existing driveway be made acceptable to the fire department? It just seems to common sense to me that that's a reasonable question, given what is being proposed and the scope of that work. And and if it's determined that it is not possible to satisfy the fire department, what sort of mitigation, screening, sensitivity will the club have to the neighbor's property who who is now going to be affected by this in a profound way? What what promises, what 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 is being proposed there? It's not clear right now, any of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Francis. Mr. Cullen?
Sure, I I actually want to agree, I think, with everything that Mr. Welch said, in the sense that we have no concern with a cap on the number of occupants or bedrooms in the cottage. We definitely would be fine with both locating the air conditioning units in a in a way that mitigated the noise and using some screening around them to make sure that they were effectively mitigated and the other points. I also want to state that the club, although there's no requirement for it, has voluntarily tried to, just recently, based on the complaints at the last meeting or since the last meeting in response to those comments, mitigate the pickleball noise. And what I mean by that is they hired an outside acoustical consultant to come in and give them advice. And they have already installed new fencing, acoustic, acoustical fabric on that fencing, additional vegetation, and are continuing to with a couple of their steps, including ordering non-regulation paddles that don't make as much noise. That could be, you know, just as good for most people when they're playing. So the the club is actively taking steps to try to reduce that, and although there's no application regarding the pickleball, we're happy to have that requirement for the mitigation that's planned being added to the permit so that it becomes a permanent required thing. In response to Mr. Farrell's request about the driveway, we could talk to the driveway, to the fire department, but but I would assure you that the idea of separating the public access and or the user access and the emergency vehicle access is something coming from the fire department. It's not about where we spend the money. It's about where, how they want to get into the property. If the fire department said you could use the internal corridor and that that was their preference, we would we would do what they said, but that is not where they are on this. So I don't know if I missed anything else that Mr. Welch had suggested, but all of them were more than acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. I I'm gonna, I don't have a vote in this, but I I'm not and I may catch some heat for this, but I'm not real comfortable with the decision tonight with so many documents not being in the packet, being sent into staff late. And and I'm not sure it's fair to 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 make to make a decision without everyone involved seeing the same documents, and I'm just, I'm throwing out my opinion there. Mr. Richter?
You can go to Mr. Lowell for a second if you want. I'm happy to wait.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. No, I guess this is just my own observation since I've been here the longest, other than Barry. I mean, we're kind of like letting this thing turn into the clam shack here a little bit. It's just a little house. You know, it's like the Brotherhood and the clam shack kind of mixed together. If, you know, this I agree with what Dave said, but this this property has been under this leadership for almost twenty years. They're they definitely know what they're doing. It's certainly a lot better than our twenty lots, the twelve and a half percent ground cover, which it could have been back in the day. Most of these people weren't here then. Didn't own these properties. A lot of work, a lot of development has happened in the surrounding area, especially Old Westmore Farm Road. Pilgrim Road is slowly changing. Is no longer what it was, even in recent history, let alone fifty years ago. I think that having the Westmore Club in this sort of control of the M C D is better for the neighbors as they evolve than they may realize or may want to admit. There was a reference to that in one of the letters from one of the older, longer time abutters down the street, Westchester Street. I I agree with continuing for the for the reasons Dave suggested. But we got to discuss who's going to be sitting on this, and we may have to have a continuance beyond August because John's not going to be here at the next meeting either. Which he indicated to us a minute ago, so I just thought of that just now. You know, but again, we, you know, we're we're kind of letting this get into where, you know, we're complaining about something that is not anything near the impact of the overall club. There are some things that could be discussed at future meeting regards to a condition that I've actually spoken to Steve about, talked to staff about. I'm not going to bring it up now, but some way to reduce future development as a condition after this this particular hearing is finished. To give the neighbors some sense of, you know, an end, I guess I would say, but again, a special permit doesn't have an end. The Westender has been going on for how many years? That's because it's in a residential neighborhood. It says M C D, just like this. You know, this is this, I I just don't see the problem with this entity the way that the neighbors do, and I know I don't live there, but I go there a lot and work there a lot, and I see how this place functions over time. And they want to be a good neighbor. There's no question about that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Barry?
Thank you. Just just a few things at this point. Mr. Cullen, I'm afraid that I think we're going to be continuing this, and it might be for two months instead of one because of Mr. Trudell. I can certainly understand that there's a point where you want the closure with this. I I I probably dare say that I do think that either the suggested cap by way of either bedrooms, number of occupants in in this dwelling is a reasonable expectation to be put in place for that. You know, I appreciate that there was the summary of conditions done, but of course, I I still would like staff to be able to vet through that process just to make sure everything's copacetic. With the fact that you've got several members of public saying they didn't receive and two lawyers saying they didn't receive information in a timely fashion. I like to see an engaged public. People are actually reading the blessed thing at this point, which is great. I I think they're entitled to that, and I know sometimes everything does become last moment as we're moving through life, but I would like them to have that opportunity. As one board member, I I will say two things in regards to the dwelling that is proposed before us at this point. The first thing is, I think as a board, we've gone through considerable lengths to make a determination of of size, what it's supposed to be, and what restrictions should be in place so that really functions as a dwelling unit. If we've missed anything, I I would really appreciate hearing what it is that we've missed. Because I feel like we've done our due diligence with making sure that it it's pretty solid the way it stands. I think I was a little surprised by the the summary of conditions that that talked about how many staff people you have, and it looks like you're going to have to come back before us for that. But if you're going to do it, what what I'm going to ask you to do is to summarize that both in terms of is to summarize that both in terms of year round versus seasonal and in terms of seasonal. Um, you know, I I I want to make sure that it's done in an appropriate way so they're not looking at seasonal overlaps here with things. Um, I'm not quite, I I can see some ways to approach it, but I I think that us knowing what it is, when we, when it's time to deal with that, would be helpful. Because just like with everything, there are peak and then there's off-peak that occurs, and those numbers would be, would be helpful in terms of reflection, because you know, another thing I see too in that is that you've got family listed in there, but I have no idea whether that family overlaps into the family of the dwelling or whether that family overlap is is actually family attributed to the employees that are there. So I I'd appreciate that when we come to that stage that there's due diligence. The the last thing is, I know MCDs can be somewhat contentious. Um, they open up the entire process to to scrutiny at this point, and I think we've heard a fair degree of testimony about things that are are not related to this dwelling, which I think we're we're trying to work with. But as we're coming to closure here, it's time to focus on the dwelling. And I feel what would be extremely helpful from the neighbors um, is is to get specifics now about that and specifics that we as a board could review prior to our next meeting that would help us to understand what it is that that the neighborhood views as contentious about this particular dwelling. Um, that way it'll give the board a little bit more time to analyze what's going on. And as I've said before, I've sat on this board, you know, and other boards long enough to know that we may think that we know everything, and then someone raises their hand and says, oh, but you didn't think about this, and it causes us to have to reflect. So getting that information from the public as one board member would be incredibly helpful. I've heard a lot, but it keeps, I keep, it keeps getting somewhat diluted about other concerns about the MCD. I feel like we're now at a point where we need to hone our focus down specifically into what 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 specifically this board is tasked to look at, and that is that particular dwelling and how it relates to the rest of everything else. Um, I have to concur, and I thought Mr. Welch brought up some incredibly good points, and I will concur with him on that. Um, so thank you, Steve, that was, that was really quite awesome. Anyways, um. I I would dare say our our motion here will probably have to be to continue, but I don't see any more hands raised, but I'm going to turn it back over to Jared. Thank you.
But Mr. Mr. Chair.
Right, yes, Mr. Collins.
So I I I will uh, at the suggestion of the of the board, take a request for continuance, I will request that we continue to the August meeting, although I understand that um, uh, we may determine that there's not going to be sufficient board members, and we may be looking at September, but just, just in case, I'd request August. Um, and then with the caveat, what what I think we would do uh before then is not only do a review with staff to make sure that all of the technical information uh, it is in the file and publicly available, but also I I think in this case, without being presumptive, to propose a list of conditions uh that would be publicly available in advance. And if people want to submit their own list of conditions or want to make comments or whatever, so that instead of having to speculate about how this would work, it would be uh, i- i- in advance. So that way, if the board determines that it wants to close the public hearing and vote at the next meeting in which it reviews this, there would be some good uh understanding of what the listed conditions would look like, and perhaps that would provide some comfort both to the board and the neighbors. Be happy to work with staff on developing that list, uh, most of which are essentially um, standard board conditions anyway.
Second, Stephen Francis, please, Francis, could you please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I I think having, having the list of proposed conditions in advance for people to weigh in on might, might be a useful tool here.
With that said, Stephen, I and and I'm not picking on anyone here, but if if we, if staff can get the documents at a timely manner to get it in the packet, I think that we we might be at a different place right now. So I urge anyone to make sure they get their documents to staff in a timely manner.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so just a quick question to Leslie or Megan. Whoever's around. Megan, if if John misses that August meeting, can he mull in to a meeting subsequently after? I think the answer is yes, but I'm just, I'm I'm ninety-eight percent sure, but I'm two percent unsure.
He can. Um.
Bigger issue is Carl.
Yeah, so we don't have Abby here right now, so I don't, I'd have to go back and check the minutes to see if she attended all of the others, because then by default, we would be at a four-member board. Yeah, and I am, even in September, so.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize something was going on with Carl as well, too, that would certainly change the dynamic even further.
So that, that's, that's, that's really kind of the the fly in the ointment, but I think we'll be able to figure this out.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to make a motion, we continue to our next meeting in August.
Second. Great, uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by John, Barry.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Even.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Uh, sounds unanimous, I got everyone correct?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you for the public, thank you for everyone that spoke. And we'll reconvene. Um. Okay. Um, next is Nantucket Old South Road LLC thirty-three Old South Road. Um, Art Pasparro.
Oh, shoot, did I skip over the thirty-three before ten, twelve dab, Kim, am I out of order here?
Uh, I have it, well, sorry, I went by the staff.
Oh, yep, I went, I went one too far, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Arthur.
Am I on the right one?
Yo, you're on the right one, I was on the wrong one, getting ahead of myself here. Hold on, give me a minute to get these guys over.
Carl.
Um, just a question for Megan, um, do I need to sit through the rest of this meeting if I was only had sat through Westmore Club?
No, you don't.
Okay. Ciao, everybody.
Miss you already, Carl.
Tonight, thanks, thanks.
See you around campus.
Thanks for joining us.
Hey, thanks for everything, Carl. We'll, we'll see you on the rock.
Thank you, Carl.
All right. Thank you, bye.
Bye, Tom.
Okay, so we've got, we've got Art back.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'm also here with um Attorney Rick Budette.
Great. Who would like to start off?
Uh, I guess I will, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh. So as as Art said, we're here together, I I assume at this point that um Cliff Shore is not with us. He was supposed to get on a plane around five-thirty uh, hoping to skate tonight, but uh, obviously that that probably was not going to happen, so um. Uh, thanks for hearing, hearing us, and uh, and speaking of uh submitting things late, uh, w- we submitted a revised plan today. Uh, I know that all of you who know Art and I, uh, know that's not typically our way. Um, but we, we've been working on this with our client, with staff last week. Um, and so uh, understanding that you're just getting this today and that obviously Mr. Pesci has not seen this plan, I didn't even have a chance to send it to Arthur Reed, who I think i- i- you know, is is interested obviously in seeing this as well. Um, uh, we understand that we can't close today, but we did want to show you our latest concept, um, because it incorporates some of the things that you all wanted to see, some of the things that staff was interested in, some of the things uh, without some of the things that staff was interested in, and have a discussion and get some feedback from all of you so that we're um, sort of ready for the the August hearing to hopefully kind of hone in on, on something that might be approvable. So um, I'll just go through some of the changes here and just sort of refresh everybody's uh recollection on this application. It is a thirteen-lot subdivision, twelve buildable lots, uh, one roadway lot. In the R-five zoning district, it is proposed to be all residential, obviously, in R-five. Um, the roadway, uh, it, we have uh added two feet to the layout, so it is now a twenty-two-foot proposed layout with a twelve-foot uh traveled surface uh, within an easement on the lots. Um, a ten-foot parking uh, parking area along the roadway, and then a five-foot uh multi-use path on the right side now of the uh parking as as suggested by staff, um, as opposed to along the 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 easement within the lots. Um, the the one thing that staff and I talked about last week, Meg- Megan and Leslie and I had a discussion last week that we did not incorporate into this plan is uh a recommendation from staff that we go with a two-way roadway on the northerly end uh adjacent to the CN uh property to the north. Um, I think Art will go through a couple of the reasons why that didn't work uh from his standpoint, um, but primarily from from uh my client's standpoint, uh, w- we did want to maintain that as one way because the the CN, while it is a a a mixed zoning district, will uh, will really only be proposed to have commercial on the very front of the lot on Old South Road. The rest is uh, is going to be proposed at some point to be um residential apartments. Um, so we we've really, th- this plan really uh makes an effort to uh separate any commercial uh from this this residential subdivision. Um, and so we we want to keep that uh of one way on the north and the entire traveled lane. Um, we also um are, you might remember, we're proposing to have this be a one-way roadway traveling from Tacoma Way uh towards uh Young's Way. So uh, the additional changes that we've made here, I think Art will go through a couple of them, but um uh, we did reduce a number of the parking spaces and and at staff's suggestion, uh included some uh, some landscape bumpouts instead of parking in some areas on the roadway. Um, again, we we went from a three-foot uh sidewalk to a five-foot multi-use path um, as suggested by a number of the members uh of the board. Um, we also, you'll see some shared driveways leading to these lots, those may have to be reconfigured, we think, but um, but we're certainly willing to to share driveways on these, this property. Um, we added some stop signs uh at the intersection of Young's Way. We also um show a a widening of Young's Way to twenty-two feet within the layout, and uh you'll see uh the multi-use path continue onto the CN property but behind the CN property so that it uh, it doesn't cross uh Young's Way or any of the uh curb cuts that will eventually be on on Young's Way. We we would like to uh hopefully enact those improvements um in sort of what we call Phase Two, which will eventually come before all of you um for the CN property. And so um, those are the changes we've made. I know that um, w- one of the big uh concerns of Arthur and I think a couple of uh members of the condo association here, uh where my office is at uh thirty-five Old South Road, is the direction of the roadway still. Uh, I know that um, some people would like to see this uh switch directions, go from Young's Way uh to Tacoma. Um, uh, we are very resistant to that uh, that direction because again, um, this is a residential neighborhood, we do not want um the commercial traffic that is currently on Old South Road uh to be zipping down this uh twelve-foot wide one-way street into the residential neighborhood. Um, to the extent that happens on on Young's Way now, um, we'd like to maintain the status quo. Um, and so that's why we just want to maintain the safety of the residences in here and um, and keep it going uh one way uh, towards the north. So um, that's it, I'll turn it over to Art, he'll um probably have a couple of uh technical points that I missed, but um, that's our presentation for now.
Great, thank you.
Um, that, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could, I don't have too many technical points to add, uh, Rick just covered that very well. Um, again, this really uh isn't meant to be the technical or engineering plan. We we really are, you know, wanting to be sure we're on the right track with the board um, before we complete those plans and um uh, you know, the other point on the direction of this tra- this traffic flow is that it keeps the shared parking on the right-hand side of the vehicles, which I think is um your more typical um, uh, method of parallel parking that most drivers are are going to be used to, and we think that that also is another reason to work well. If we were to flip it around, um, then that parallel parking would either be on the driver's side or, you know, your your left-hand side of the vehicle if it was to stay where it is. And if you were to put it on the same size, side as the lots, it really wouldn't work very well uh with the driveways and the actual properties there. So we think that this configuration, you know, makes a lot of sense. And also, and it really moving from a a lower density to a higher density for traffic flow makes more sense than than the, than the opposite. Um, so we have given this, you know, a a lot of thought, and um, uh, again, I think Rick covered most of the uh, most of the points and the um, it's what's, what is shown in green, as he mentioned, opposite of the um, uh, every other shared driveway are are, you know, planting areas to kind of break this up. And we also added planting areas at uh both ends of the of the road. Um, again, I know maybe a small piece to the overall um layout. In terms of the two-way traffic at the northerly end, it really starts to create, I I actually kind of drafted a little bit and struggled with it. Um, it it starts to create a bit of a, an atypical situation where where a one-way meets a a two-way street on a head-on um, situation. And um, given that, as um Rick mentioned, that the southern end of that lot, while in CN, the intent is that it would be uh commercially used, um, that keeping the road as a, as a one-way residential to residential really is what makes sense. It also allows us to preserve the um, uh, additional parking in that area. Um, so I just wanted to give you our our thinking on that and um, you know, that 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 we did uh, take those comments seriously and look at them and um think though that this, this serves a better overall project. And again, um, we're here for any questions, comments, and welcome your feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Art. Arthur.
Thank you. Um. I did speak at the last meeting, and I will uh reiterate and expand slightly upon what I said previously. And uh, uh, as you know, I have absolutely no objection to this project per se. I'm in favor of anything that's going to provide housing of this type in in this neighborhood. Uh, the only issue that I have is the direction of traffic in the one-way section of uh, the proposed roadway, which by the way, should be called something other than Young's Way to avoid confusion and uh, uh, problems for emergency responders and what have you. Uh, Young's Way should remain what it is, otherwise we'd all have to change our stationary. So let the new development uh, uh, have its own name and uh, from the point where it branches off from Young's Way. Now, what our problem is, is the direction of the way. And what is, uh, it's what people are not, uh, you know, the applicant is not taking into consideration is the backup that there is, the problem that there is in turning out of Young's Way to the left into Old South Road, particularly in the summertime. But all year, there's a great amount of traffic on Old South Road. Old South Road is perhaps the busiest road in Nantucket. It's uh, it's, it's like the new Main Street. And the greatest amount of traffic coming out of Young's Way turns to the left to head toward the Rotary and toward town. And that left turn is very difficult to take. You almost have to at time, well, first of all, sometimes people will generously let you get out. Uh, and when, you know, generous person going each way on Old South Road, it's like you've hit the jackpot. And otherwise, you have to really take your life in your hands and uh, uh, and uh, uh, time your departure to that, make that left turn, uh, uh, or or else you're going to get squashed, or else you're going to wait forever. Now, you have the busy road, Old South Road, you have sleepy Tacoma Way in the back. Tacoma Way has, well, it has more traffic than it used to, to, since Young's Way goes all the way through now. But there is never a backup of traffic there, there's never a traffic problem. And what you are doing here is And what you are doing here is ta- is having people take a left turn from Tacoma Way into the new roadway. And then after they have done whatever they're going to do there, leaving by traveling up to um the intersection of Young's Way and Old South Road and taking a left turn with all the hazards that I've just described to you. Whereas if you have the traffic coming into this area from Old South Road and turning into Young's Way, that's a right turn. It's 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 there's there's no difficulty in making the turn. The road needs to be widened a little bit, which I believe the applicant is willing to do because the traffic coming out, as I said, most of it's going to the uh to the left toward town and uh cars tend to be angled out a little bit in that direction. It can be a bit of a squeeze sometimes if you have two large vehicles meeting each other at that point. But apart from that, Young's Way uh at that point is a right turn from Old South Road. And at the other end, obviously, it's a right to turn into Tacoma Way. So would you rather have traffic making a a left turn into a heavily traveled road or a right turn into a lightly traveled road? I think that's what it comes down to. And uh I've spoken with others, the uh with other um uh business owners in the Kipos Corner Development. Uh I believe Michael Amara is on the call. I believe that Sheila Egan and um uh of Swains Travel and uh Martha Sargent of Computer Solutions were also planning to attend. I don't know whether they're on. But uh in any event, they all have the same concern that I do about the uh volume of traffic that this will generate. And once again, we just don't need one more uh load of traffic being dumped onto the uh uh turn, the left turn from Young's Way into Old South Road. So I hope the applicant, as I said at the beginning, we have no problem with this project. I wish them every success with it. Uh but I think that we need to make sure that the traffic goes the right way. And if there's any question about that, I would suggest that the board ought to require a traffic study uh by a qualified uh uh traffic uh engineer engaged by the applicant and with funding for a uh peer review by uh uh a a traffic engineer engaged by the planning board to uh review it. I hope that uh I don't think that would be necessary if we're running the traffic in the direction that I'm suggesting, but I do think we should uh require that because of the very difficult nature of the intersection of Old South Road and Young's Way, if that's coming out that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arthur. Um, Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I guess um, you know, as I as I mentioned uh last hearing, um you know, I I would agree with Arthur on some of those points, um but uh disagree on a number of points as well. Um yeah, I moved my office to Kipos Corner in January. And uh in comparison to Arthur's use of Young's Way, I've been here about thirty seconds. So uh respect that he's been here a long time and he knows the neighborhood very well. But just in the short time time that I've been here personally, um and this is just me speaking on a personal level. Arthur's right that it is difficult to take a left off Young's Way into Old South Road. Absolutely. And it's not uh particularly easier in the winter time. Um and for that reason, I would never ever go to the stop sign on Young's Way uh from where I am. I simply go down uh Young's Way the opposite way and I go down Tacoma. I live near the high school. Summer and winter, I go down First Way uh and then I carry forward. I take a right uh and um end up on Fairgrounds Road and take a right onto Tacoma and come the back way every single time. And I do the same thing when I take my bicycle. Um and I think that people will get the picture and do the same thing. Frankly, I think they're just going to end up on Tacoma anyway. Uh and if they end up at the stop sign on Young's Way, they'll only make that mistake once. Um because I agree, there you know, there there could be a backup there. Um but I don't think people uh are going to do it very long. Um and I think they will go down, they will end up on Tacoma eventually. And I think the problem with reversing the direction of it, folks, and and again, I I'd love to hear the board's take on it. Uh is that it will specifically encourage those people who are currently on Old South Road to drive down this narrow one-way street to Tacoma as opposed to using Young's Way. If they do that now, some people do, some people don't. So um you know, if I have to go to, if I have to drive to the town building, uh you know, I I prefer to walk, but today, um if I had to drive and it's raining, um you know, I I go down Tacoma and go down Fairgrounds and and go the opposite way. So um and I think that will probably continue.
Thank you, Rick. Um, board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks. Just chime in a little bit with this. God, at least it's not the clam shack. All right. So, look. I I hear what you guys are trying to do. The biggest cut through on Nantucket is Newtown Road, so that's just all all in favor say hi to that because that's fact, okay? No question about it. Tacoma, cars are going to be spread out. Lover's Lane and it is going to get improved. That's going to be a cut through too, which is what needs to happen. Amelia Drive, you know, is with weight drive opened up now, is kind of a new and improved, better cut through because you only have to go a little ways. I do understand what you guys are saying about keeping the new road. Got to come up with a name for that. That was a that was a baseball field back there, you know, you guys, so you know. And I see what you're doing. You're trying to keep that from being a cut through in the opposite direction because people will start sort of not taking a left on the real Young's Way. But the people that live there are going to take a right and loop around and go out to coma. I mean, that's that's not, doesn't require a a traffic consultant to figure that out. So I guess my question is, we can reverse the direction if it doesn't work. It's not not like you can't change anything. But nobody's asking for it to be two-way, so that's important. Is that correct? Rick and Art, it's, you don't want it to be two-way, right? So we're not going to have on-street parking or no?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to have on, are we, as I'm concerned with removing the on-street parking, I think we should have that.
It's there now.
Yeah, we have.
Okay. All right. Because I mean, that's sort of like, you know, two things that don't make sense. I mean, I I'm I don't want to like get bogged down on this, but people aren't going to go to Old South Road and try to take a left just because it's going that direction. They're going to turn around and go the other way. That's just what's going to happen. So and Tacoma is the perfect road for for that. It's not a problem. It's twenty feet wide. It's got berms, it's got a sidewalk, bike path, whatever. So I don't, I I I I see what you're saying, but it isn't again, the people aren't going to actually go out to Old South unless they absolutely have to, or if they're taking a right. So that's all I have, I guess, for now.
Thank you, Nat. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I'm just going to take off uh where Nat left off. Um he said everything I was going to say to start. I do like the direction where it's going right now towards um Old South Road uh for a couple of reasons. Uh as Nat said, they're going to learn quickly when you go down there. If you make that left at the stop and you get bogged down in traffic, a backup, and then try and make a left, they are just going to naturally take a right, go around Tacoma and go out the proposed way that Arthur has mentioned, that it's probably going to be more convenient. In addition to that, I think because we have to kind of plan, not just for this residential section, we have to think ahead and plan for the CN part of it. So when you're coming off of Old South Road and you and you have a commercial vehicle, you have a box truck, you have a trailer or something, or whatever, a landscape trailer, you're going to want to make that right and go to those CN lots. However, if you propose to change the direction, those same trucks, instead of going out towards Old South Road, they are going to continue down this residential neighborhood. And then they're going to bog down Tacoma. And those commercial trucks are going to find a way not to turn around and go back on Old South Road. They are going to head down there and go down Tacoma. And I think what we're trying to do with the commercial lots is keep and that's why it was designed like that. Have the residential in the back and the commercial in the front on a commercial road or main main road like Old South Road. So I think that way it's proposed right now, it kind of works. And to have that two-way in the beginning is vital for the commercial lots to to work with that. But um you know, just in a combination, looking ahead at what we're going to be viewing when the CN part of it comes up, we have to, as we always talk about the new downtown out of town on Sparks, we have to think ahead of what's the the next subdivision or the the part will be. And I think when you when you work the two of them together, um as is proposed right now, um works. Uh also, I do like what Nat said, you know, the road doesn't change. If for some reason this doesn't work as we think it will, change the direction. We've done this a couple of different times. If you all remember, there was a stop sign right across from the uh um the Fish Market by Old South Market. Uh and then we took it away. And then we added it back. And then we tricked, you know, you can make these changes to see how it affects things. Uh we never had a stop sign by Bartlett Road. We added that, you know, and I give you credit to Cam Sutton, our former alternate member that made that suggestion. Um that still stays in place and that has alleviated a lot of traffic instead of uh, you know, that backlog on Bartlett Road backing up there for kids going to school. So there are things that we can add and take away, and that's a good uh suggestion that that we try it out. We do it as proposed. And I think when we incorporate that with the commercial lots, it's going to work well. It just my opinion. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, John. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I kind of disagree. I think that, as Art said, the sidewalk and the way it is set up for the way that people are going to pull in, I think if you're going to do it, so you really got to get it right the first time. And I personally feel that you should have a sidewalk uh going in front of the houses so that adds a little curb appeal. Someone comes out of the house with kids or whatever, they're able to walk to the car and and park. And I think that there's a safety factor that. I think the other part is, you know, change the direction. So you are coming to Tacoma. And if you're worried about commercial trucks going through there, you put in a couple of speed bumps or elevated, you know, walkway or whatever, just to kind of slow people down. No truck is going to want to go through there if that's there. I think it just makes more sense. And then Young's Way just kind of you know, stays Young's Way. But if if I'm coming from town and I want to go home to whatever this new Young's Way is, um Young's Pass, I will call it for now, but it just, I would want to come out Old South Road and then swing in and then you know, come into my neighborhood and come to my house. And then if I was going to leave, I'd want to go to Tacoma, up to Fairgrounds, and I can go left or right. But if I'm going back to town, well, it's an easy right to get on Fairgrounds Road and go on with the traffic. So I really think the flow is going to help better as that, as far as that goes. I really think it's just kind of important to really get this right the first time. And the other part is Phase Two is going to have what looks like a path that will tie into the backside of the uh north side of that front lot. I think that that makes more sense. Um and then the other part is along, you know, across from Arthur and and Rick's uh offices or Michael Maris. I think if you had a sidewalk that continued out of that development, got you to Old South Road and relocated that crossover to the bike path, I think that that really makes sense. And you know, maybe if it's too much, we put a new stop sign there, but I really think that that we really need to get this right the first time. And and whether it's a test of, you know, paving it for a little while before we put in the sidewalk, but I feel like the other way works better. And the other part of I was parking on the on-street and I'm grabbing my groceries, I have a kid or whatever, and I go to cross the street and some truck's trying to flip back, you know, screw around to back the other side. I, you know, I feel like there's going to be something that's going to happen. It's going to be only a twelve-foot wide lane. We see it on Amelia, you know, it's it's two-way and you know, it's it's always congested and bogged down. You're waiting for the next person, which is fine, and you're being polite. But at the same time, I think if that was a one-way, that could help out as well, but we'll talk about that later on. But my feeling is to reverse that uh that road, have the sidewalk against the properties, which will add curb appeal, and then, of course, then have the parking on that side. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Joe, Barry?
Thanks. I want to agree with Joe. I think that reversing that way traffic is going to flow there to bring it from Young's Way down into Tacoma as as the outlet makes more sense. Old South Road continues to be a little bit of a traffic nightmare. And in its current iteration of what you're doing right now, you're doing one of two things. You're either going to challenge all those people living along that street, have to go all the way up to the end, turn the other way, and then go back down Tacoma, which they're going to be like shaking their heads, why in God's green earth am I doing that? To me, you want to get more traffic off of Old South Road and divert it more onto Tacoma and or Fairgrounds. You know, when you think about the traffic flow as well too, you know, your morning traffic flow on Old South Road is heading in town. So if these people are trying to do the same thing, you're going to be encouraging almost the entire neighborhood to be making left-hand turns onto Old South Road when indeed it would be easier for them to go the back way and do it. So I I'm a much bigger fan of taking that, taking the way the traffic is going to flow and bringing it down. Um so the entrance comes in off of Old South Road and exits back out of Tacoma. The other thing too is I I like the continuation of the sidewalk there. If you make the traffic flow that way, that may actually work better as well too um in terms of that sidewalk slowly becoming a bike path. Remember that we're also going to be putting a bike path down Lover's Lane. That doesn't mean there can't be some type of continuation through the forest to connect on to that that bike path. Because if you're encouraging the bike, you know, if you're encouraging bicycle traffic to cut across Old South Road, I'd I'd prefer looking at alternate methodologies for getting people around. So I think there's a case to be made once again for for making that, whatever traffic patterns, be it bike or pedestrian or or automobile that same way. As much as I detest speed bumps, I think they'll make sense here if you want to try to, you know, discourage heavy-duty or vehicles doing that. I don't think I don't think they'd be inclined to do it anyways, but there's certainly ways to dissuade that process. Staff brought up some really good points about not only just the direction flow, but I think some important things because this is entirely residential on this. The idea of using shared driveways um and then eliminating some of the on-street parking in favor of trees and the streetscape. I think to me that is a much more appealing look for a neighborhood than it is just to have parking lining all up and down. I think there's some very creative strategies, especially using shared driveways where we can eliminate that and have a much more improved streetscape. And if you're still not sure about, believe me on that, look, look at what we're trying to do with Amelia Drive, which was all streetscape. And now we're trying to turn it into something that is a little bit more of a a much more favorable looking uh environment, streetscape-wise. I just want to be a hundred percent sure that this is all residential. There is no commercial involved. Okay, I again, I just have to ask the question, be a hundred percent sure. And in terms of the number of dwellings proposed per lot, is is there any restrictions on that or is it going to be full-fledged right up to tertiary or help me out here to understand that?
You're muted there, Rick. Sorry.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, we haven't really, um. Thought about restricting them in any way. I think as you, you heard Cliff said last, uh. Mentioned last hearing that, you know, we might want to, uh. Allow people to, you know, sort of start their building process with what would look like, uh, you know, either a tertiary or. Or a secondary from a, you know, from a finished perspective and then hope to maybe build a bigger house later. Um, so we haven't really considered a, any restrictions on that at all.
Okay, I, I think I'd probably like to talk to staff a little bit further about it. But it's something that I want you to at least get up on the board a little bit. So that we, we can have a little bit more fruitful discussion by our next meeting, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steven.
Oh, hey, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I realize I'm not actually sitting on this, but I, I just want to get a clarification if I could, um. I don't want to be the skunk at the party, but if it needs to be flagged, it needs to be flagged. Um, can we get the aerial view page one up on the screen? By any chance?
Yes.
This is something, this is something we don't pick up on the site plan and I'm, I'm not, you know, sugge- suggesting. Um, obfuscation or anything, but, um, do we have it up?
Nope, hold on, it's still downloading.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'm not going to hold you in suspense. I mean, the, um, you know, the GIS map is intentionally to some extent. Not accurate with respect to the lot, property line, um, layouts, but. In this instance, I think it's fairly accurate. And, um, if it's not, it actually makes the potential situation worse. So, um, the, you've got these properties along Young's Way that all back up to where the, the new lot. Where the lot exists, but the new parking will be created if the road is put on this side of the lot. I think that's evident on the screen. Um, you know, I don't know, it's like Bert and Gail Johnson's, uh, they got a property there, Rob Reed and Dave Bisco, whatever. Um, but those cars will be really close, sorry. To, uh, the existing structures if the road is on that side of the lot. So I just, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Um, Rick.
Uh, yeah, just, just to respond to that, I think that was the purpose, Stephen, of, um. Staff recommending that we put, um, the sidewalk on that side. So that, or, or the, the multi-use path on that side so that those. Um, parked cars were not, you know, opening their doors into Rob Reed's property, et cetera. Um, I mean, it is a 10-foot parking lane that is a legal parking space and you should be able to get in and out within there. Um, but I think staff picked up on that and that's why, um, we switched it to that side.
Great, thank you. I mean, so my, I. I'm not sure about the direction of traffic, but I think that, and maybe it was Joe, brought up the concern of, of this, of the path. And the cars being on that side. And I think, I, I, I mean, my concern is, is for the kids, you know. Darting across the street, coming out from between two cars. I'm not sure it's really the, the best. Um, setup for that. Um, and for now, that's all I really have to say. I think we're going to try to go to the public now. And come back to the board. I think Mike O'Meara has his hand up. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Michael O'Meara, I'm at a butter at 35A Old South Road. Um, my current concern is list limited to the use of Young's Way. To exit the property. I have no problem with, with using. Young's Way to approach the, the property. I have no problems at all with this subdivision. Uh, I have full faith in Cliff Shore and the, the group, he's, his team that he's put together. Um. I'm very concerned about almost doubling the traffic leaving Young's Way. If, if that was the only way to, to the, the, the primary way to leave. Uh, I think that Arthur, uh, who usually has good ideas, has a, a great idea. And, and engaging a traffic engineer and, um, I hope that happens. Um, I also am curious as to when. The, the commercial property, we'll get a sneak preview of that to see how it. Coordinates with the rest of the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Board members? Barry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think there's much more and, you know, we still have a few more applications before us. This is not going to get resolved tonight. Um. I'm sorry, I'm thinking about something else right at the moment too about, um. About that dreaded stop sign by Bartlett there, but anyways, um, yeah, anyways. Uh, let me be quiet and let me make a motion to continue to, I, well, I see other hands up. I am hoping to try to continue this to our next meeting. But I can wait a minute.
You, uh, let's, can we just hold that thought for a minute?
Of course, absolutely. See more hands up, which I was not prepared for.
Yeah, right.
Uh, well, Matt John has anything to say, you know, I, I just wanted to say two things. Um, number one. I call it the dreaded stop sign at Bartlett Farm too, since I live right there. Uh, but anyway, I just wanted to say thanks for the feedback and, um, you know, we'll go back to the drawing board. I'll talk to my client and, um, staff obviously, and, and I'll keep Arthur and Michael and. Uh, my other neighbors, uh, apprised here of, of what we come up with. So.
Great. Thanks, Rick. John, everyone's stacking on now.
Yeah, not, just, I, I like Barry's idea of continuing. Uh, but just obviously the, the normal things, fire department, ease going in there. If they have an opinion on what they would prefer, you know, for the, for which way, um, I'd be curious if, uh. If they had an opinion about that. Um, also any kind of lighting, you know, things that would normally go, um, in that residential area. Is it, um, you know, dark sky, low lighting, you know, things like that? Because if that many residences are going to be, um, put there. Um, maybe there's going to be some kind of low light, street light or landscape light or something like that. So I see that we still have to address that, you know, landscaping plans and things like that. So I'm sure that I can wait for the next meeting. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Joe.
Uh, yeah, just quickly, I just think if we can get Mike Burns or someone involved, that'd be great. And then echoing what John just said, I was going to say the same thing, so. Sure and sweet.
Lots of eyes on it. Great. So Barry?
Yeah, motion to continue to our August meeting.
Second.
Great, uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by John Barry.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
Nat.
Aye.
Um, Barry, John, uh, I forget.
Joe.
Yeah, Joe.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, we'll see you next month.
Yeah.
Um. Next is, uh, Dave Kim Smiley LLC, 10 and 12 Dave Kim Lane. Um, and we have Arthur Reed and Ryan Maxwell on this one. Hello, Arthur.
Hi, I have several, uh, other representatives on the line, which we may want to call on at some point. But let's, let's see how we do before we, um, uh, before we promote them.
Great.
Um. The situation here is that the, um. Uh, since the last meeting, we've submitted quite a bit of additional materials, uh, that were inquired about at the last meeting. Uh, including updated plans, um, uh, the hours of operation. Uh, as far as the, um, uh, uh, gate being open of being, uh, six to nine. Uh, or at least the, the facility would be open to, um, people coming in from six to nine. Uh, the office hours we stated before and those don't change. Uh, we have pre- presented plans as to the security system and access, uh, gate. That will, uh, be, uh, in use and, uh, will be, uh, in use at all times. Except that, um, uh, it, the six to nine will be the only hours in which members of the public. Who, uh, people who are renting units will be able to come in. Uh, residents of the residential units, uh, and staff of the facility and. Uh, police and fire, et cetera, emergency responders, uh, will have the ability to get in, uh, uh, at any time. Uh, you have updated landscape plan, uh, showing the lighting. And, uh, we've added, um, additional, um, uh. Trees at the rear of the site in order to help, uh, screen or concerns, uh, expressed about the amount of screening before. And we've, uh, augmented that and I think we have quite a robust amount of screening in the, in the plans that we're proposing at the present time. Uh, the, uh, only issue in the staff report that I would have. Uh, an issue about would be the recommendation regarding, uh, improvements. Uh, at the intersection of Dave Kim and Lover's Lane. And, uh, as I've mentioned, uh, in, in my, uh, letter to the board. Uh, there is a deed restriction that was imposed upon this property. When it was sold by Richmond to the present ownership, which prohibits us from using. Dave Kim Lane to the west of the property for access to or from Lover's Lane. Uh, I actually didn't know why that restriction had been specifically imposed. But I spoke today with, uh, Richmond's council and, uh, got a little background on it. Uh, apparently, as I understand it, they had spent a lot of time, uh, discussing with Andrew Vorse, how the, um. Uh, whole, uh, commercial part of the Richmond, uh, project would be, uh, accessed. Including the properties like this one to the rear and that it was agreed that the access would be over. Uh, Ironwood Road, uh, which then becomes Nancy Ann Lane as it. Uh, passes toward the back of the property and heads right back to where our, our, our locus is. Uh, there isn't any traffic on Lover's Lane at the present time in, in that area. As, as a, at least not very much because, uh, there's at the present time, the, um. Ponding of water that exists at the west to the end of Dave Kim, near the intersection of Lover's Lane. As a result of, uh, retaining walls there that, uh, have, uh, that trap the water. Uh, and there's the question of what improvements may take place to Lover's Lane. But I'm told that the other reason that they imposed the restriction was in response to neighbors in that area. Who had been in touch with them, uh, and I believe with the planning department, indicating their. Opposition to having commercial traffic come down Lover's Lane in connection with the, uh, Richmond property. Uh, because of their quiet residential use and, uh, not wanting to see that disturbed. So that's the reason why I really don't think that we're a player in terms of, uh. Uh, Lover's Lane, and I understand there may be some, uh, uh, push toward improvements toward Lover's Lane. I don't know, once again, where that's going to sit with the, uh, with the abutters. Uh, but that is, um, the background of it and the reason why I really think that, uh. Uh, we are, as I say, a player in terms of, uh, of Lover's Lane. Uh, we are also, uh, uh, in, in putting in, and Don can speak to this, uh, specifically. Uh, a new water main that will serve. Uh, the property and, uh, uh, also will be available, you know, at considerable expense. To serve other properties in the area. So we're certainly making our contribution toward the. Town infrastructure, uh, by doing that. And as I say, Don, perhaps you, you could speak, uh, briefly to what the situation is with that, uh, water line.
Uh, yes, uh, Don Bracken, um, for whatever reason, uh, water line was never installed. Between Gregland Lane and Nancy Anne, Anne Lane, um, where our frontage is located. So at last time, we, uh, were in front of the board with the FedEx facility. It came up at that point that we would have to loop or connect those two wa- water mains. In order to get, uh, fire suppression system connections. So. Um, I believe it's, it's probably about five or 600 feet of eight-inch water main. Um, that, that will obviously be an improvement, you know, in the subdivision and help the circulation of water in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Don. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, um. This Wesley's on somewhere, um.
Recuse from this.
When was that? Is she not on there? Oh, she is. Uh, when was that put in, that deed restriction? I bet that was a long time ago. When the first project first started, no? Like 15? 16? Or just curious. That's a weird restriction. That sounds like some old.
No.
Anger, angry thing.
If I may not, uh, it was put in the deed. It's, it's in the deed from Richmond to the present owner of this property.
So this is new.
Yeah, about two years ago.
It's new and something, um, not enforceable by the town. It's a private deed restriction.
Right, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So then I'll reverse my thinking on why this is there. They, that when the road does get fixed, they don't want it to be traveled on that much. I mean, there's got to be some bizarre reason because. The Lover's Lane improvement is going to change everything. I mean. That's it, like that's, you know. Like Francis Street, you know, it's a big deal. This is going to be, make a huge change in everything and those neighbors that have been flooded. They're going to get protection from that, but this one, that one spot that's a pond. For whatever reason, I think is going to be a overall entire neighborhood. Fixed with Richmond, with everybody somehow at some point. I would certainly don't agree with putting this on this one applicant. Especially after hearing what Don just said, that ain't free to do what he's talking about, especially that much. Um, they got to put, they, they got to put stubs and everything. That's expensive to do that. Um, and they, are they, do you have to put curb stops too, Don? Or what do we have to do when we do that?
Uh, I don't think the town would require us to put the curb stops in because they could put those in live if they wanted them. And most of those properties are already serviced with spaghetti lines coming from the end of those roads.
Yeah.
So, um.
But this is more for, this is more for future fire protection and, you know, volume, overall volume.
Yeah, and to correct probably what should have been done in the beginning, um. So, I mean, there may be other developments that, that will want to tie into that line and they can if they want to, um. So I, I think they, they have some rough numbers on the cost and I think it's somewhere between two and 300,000 at this point.
Yeah.
The water line, for the water main.
Is there, is there any plan, Don, not to belabor this, but is there a plan for where the reach pits are? On that, you know, pond? There's got to be some, is it nothing? Nothing on paper at all?
Uh, not as far as I know. Our survey didn't extend that far off the property, so. Um.
Yeah. Okay. I might have asked that question years ago. I don't remember what the answer was, but anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Nat Barry.
Thanks, uh, just to Megan or Leslie, um. Are there any improvements that we should be considering from, um, Dave can help to, um, Lover's Lane? That should be addressed? Since that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's our, it's our opinion at the staff level that while there is this private deed restriction. And while perhaps the employees and vendors and residents of that lot should be encouraged to follow that. There's absolutely no way to practically enforce that with the general public. And with the proposed improvements to Lover's Lane. And, and the increase in traffic to this facility, that it would be appropriate to somehow be involved. Um, with that process, whether it be. with that process, whether it be a monetary amount or whatnot. And the thing of it is too, a lot of these other commercial uses in this area, the traffic is just the employees of that business, whereas this is open to the general public. So it's a little bit different.
And that's why I'm bringing it up at this point, because you're right, the general public will be using it, and that really is truly just about one of their only means of access into the site. I don't want to belabor this into another month because I don't know what else would be discussing. Go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, Barry. I'm not going to be around. I'm going to be on vacation, but Mike Burns is regularly in touch with GPI, and I believe who's the who's coordinating, the consultant that is coordinating Lover's Lane improvements. I believe there's going to be a call on Thursday in which Don was invited to be a part of as well as Arthur. So I would suggest maybe circling back after that conversation with that call on Thursday to maybe get a better idea of what can be contributed here.
Thank you. I appreciate, I didn't know that, and that's fantastic. So I, you know, we, as far as I'm concerned now, we're going to continue this into our next meeting. Because I think that's a very vital element that will need to be addressed with what they're proposing to have before. So thank you.
Well, we were very much hoping to get this closed at this meeting if all possible.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, and I can empathize with that. And trust me, up until three minutes ago, I was right on the same length with you, Arthur, on that. But, you know, this, this is an important thing that really does need to be looked at. You know, we, it's one of our key missions as planning board members. So I don't know if you have a remedy for us, but it, you know, it's going to have to be something that makes us go, wow, we don't need, we don't want to necessarily, believe me, I'm the last one who wants to keep continuing these things.
One thing that I would propose that we do is to place a no left turn sign at the exit. Now, that obviously doesn't address people who are entering, although we certainly will be, you know, in the in the contract that we have with the people with with space in the facility, there'll be a specific provision prohibiting access coming in from Lover's Lane. I agree that if if and when Lake Kiv, Lake Dave Kim is drained, that there may be no way to prevent a certain amount of traffic from coming in that way. But we will be notifying our customers. And then as far as the exit is concerned, have the no left turn sign. And we wouldn't be averse, you know, to a small contribution just to resolve the issue, but I don't, you know, this this isn't our problem, really.
Arthur, I don't think we're expecting you guys to pay for this. We're looking for a contribution, not for you guys to fix it, I think. So if that was what you thought, no, we're looking for a contribution.
Mr. Chair, could I also ask what the contribution for FedEx was when we discussed this? Just to get an apples and apples type of comparison, because we were, they didn't mention anything in the previous application with FedEx about water mains and things like that. However, hearing from Don, it sounds like it's not going to necessarily benefit the people that are already there because they already have spaghetti lines, as he says, going through there. So the water line is really directly affecting their particular property. So I'm just curious what FedEx had paid in as a donation.
Meg?
I don't know offhand, and unfortunately, I don't have access to those files from home. So I can look into that and get back to you all.
Nat?
I'm not even sure what what I want to say now. I mean, I just don't want to hold them up. There's going to be a meeting about this week about Lover's Lane. I mean, when, Arthur, you were talking about no left turn on Lover's from Dave Kim?
No, no left turn into, if I said that, it was a misstatement. Certainly, no left turn into Dave Kim from our driveway.
Oh.
Which would prevent people from going out toward Lover's Lane.
I understood that, Arthur. Good job.
I mean, I think we're just, I don't want to, I think we're like a long way away from no left turns and no right turn stuff in this area. I mean, we're still fixing it. It's like got a long way from completion. I just I just think that this pond is eventually going to be solved in some manner. I think putting pressure with ourselves as the planning board in my, and with Richmond and just everybody involved is probably a better approach than using one applicant. However, I do understand the donation part, like we would do with a bike path or with some other thing in a different area. I get that point, too. I just don't know exactly how to proceed. If there's something we can do at the staff level, Megan, that we could approve this with a certain condition or so they don't have to wait a month for this in another meeting. I don't not going to make any emotions or that or anything like that. I'm just making a suggestion. Because, I mean, I just don't want to get bogged down in this one thing. It doesn't really make a lot of sense, in my opinion.
What if I made a suggestion of a dollar amount right now?
Well, I, I think there should be some parity with FedEx, and I think that if we can we can agree on a dollar amount and with the understanding that if FedEx was far less, then there should be, you know, I don't know how to word it. Go ahead, Barry, if you have an idea on this.
I don't, but I do have a question at this point. Was, is FedEx a publicly accessed facility, or is that just all internal FedEx things?
That's a good point.
Yeah. So, you know, and I will say, respect, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I believe that left turn sign will be about, be about as meaningful as the restriction on Lover's Lane. People are just going to, they're going to do what they want to do out there, especially given the dynamics of the way it looks and functions right now. Like I said, you know, I'd rather have my facts in front of me at this point, and boy, do I hate to delay. I really do.
So I would, with that said, I'd suggest a $10,000 donation if that's in the realm for for your clients, Arthur.
That works for everybody. We've got a deal.
I guess I would have to hear from the rest of the board and see if it works for them.
I would refer to staff if they're accepting of that.
Yeah. Agreed.
I think that's appropriate.
Barry?
No.
I just, I'm just, your hands up. That's what I'm calling.
I'm sorry. I just want to thank Mr. Reed. That's all.
Okay.
You caught my attention.
I think that's agreeable, it seems. So. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious. I know you guys are wrapping this up, but what happened? Was there any appetite for housing management plan for the duplex behind a large commercial structure? Noise would probably resonate, bounce off that building, so on and so forth. I think that was primarily it. Thanks.
I think that's a good call, but we, if they could do that and deliver it to staff, that shouldn't hold this.
The plan, just so you know, is that one of the units would definitely be used for staff, and specifically by that, we mean probably the manager and his family or her family, if the case may be. And that the other unit might well be used for another staff person, or if not, would be available for rental to someone else. I think the chances are very high that that both will be management of the, used by management of the facility.
And are there, if I can ask real quick, is, so is that two, is that two, three bedrooms?
Two, three bedrooms, yeah.
All right, perfect.
And no short-term rentals.
Read my mind. I mean, it's only two units. How, Megan, do we need a housing management plan on this?
I don't think so.
I think if the management, if a manager is going to live in there, I think that that's that's enough of guardrails for me at least. And we restrict it to year round for all the units. Barry?
And if it is a problem, it's an MCD. So we can come right back to it and say, okay, we definitely need to have that in place.
Great. Let's check with the public real quick. Anyone out there?
Hi, yep, Victor Mudo.
All right. Welcome, Victor.
Hi, everybody. So I just have one quick observation. I sent in some questions about stormwater management on the site and how it might contribute to the Dave Kim Lane stream that runs down to the Dave Kim Lake. So I didn't hear anybody address that.
Great. Don?
Yes, I think that was addressed at the first meeting. All the runoff generated by the site is self-contained on the site. There won't be any runoff going into the road. And all be subsurface, subsurface system.
Great. Does that answer your question, Victor?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Meg?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Barry?
Mr. Chairman, then I'm going to make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
Going to give that one to Joe. Motion made by Barry, second by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. So that's unanimous. What's the board's pleasure?
I'm going to make a motion at this point that we approve the application with the contribution that we talked about, the changes to hours of operation, updated landscape plan, the things that we talked about, the access gates, landscaping as well, too. So I don't think there's much of anything else, is there, Megan?
Year round on the duplex?
I think, yep, year round on the duplex, but they did also mention that one of them may be a rental of some type, so.
I think we normally phrase this year round or peak season employee housing, so that way they'd have the flexibility.
I see Mr. Reed shaking his head, and I concur. So that is my motion, sir.
Second.
Great. Motion made by Barry, second by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an I as well.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
Yeah. This is by far the shortest hearing of the night so far. I mean, each of the others lasted at least an hour.
Trying to stay on this roll, Arthur. Don't curse us, please. Alrighty. CRH 46 Surfside Road LLC, 46 South Surfside Road. I can't even speak anymore. Sarah?
I'm going to bring over Paul Santos and Sarah. But in the meantime, this one should be really straightforward and simple as well.
This is a minor mod, right?
It's a major mod technically, but it's minor.
All right. So we need to open a hearing on this. Perfect. Hi, Sarah.
Good evening. So Mr. Reed has thrown down the gauntlet, so I will attempt to be extremely brief. This is a modification to an MCD special permit. The reason for the modification is twofold. First, when the property was constructed due to changes made in the HTC process, the apartments got reconfigured due to roofline changes, et cetera. So we have, instead of two two-bedroom apartments, we have a three-bedroom apartment and a one or and a studio. So we just want to clarify that. And secondly, the decision provided that the apartments would be rented in conjunction with the contractor shops below. We're finding that there isn't always demand for the contractor shops to have employee housing. There's a lot of demand for employee housing, however. So what we would like to do is have the ability to rent, and we are in agreement with all the conditions in the staff report, rent those apartments for either employee housing or year-round housing with absolutely no short-term rentals. It doesn't lend itself to that anyway. It's really a great spot for employee housing. And that, we've looked at the staff report and we're in full agreement with the recommendation. And Paul Santos is here to answer any questions. Robin, I think, was on earlier, but she is in Vermont dealing with a very significant flooding issue, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're just hoping that the waters stop rising. She's two, I think, two steps away from disaster, she said.
Fingers. Thank you, Sarah. Question from any board members?
No.
Open up the public hearing? I need a motion for that? No, I don't.
Seeing anybody with their hand raised.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, yeah.
No messing around. John, John made the motion. Barry seconded. John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye.
Nathaniel?
Yes, aye.
And I'm an I as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the finding and the two conditions listed.
Second.
Great. Motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. I think you won, Sarah.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Arthur will get payback on me somehow.
Be safe, Mrs. Helleck.
Yeah, be safe.
Yes, I know. It's awful.
Yeah, sounds horrible. Great. On to Shawnee Davis 11 Equator Drive. John Brescher is representing.
John Brescher is not representing this, and I don't see the applicant here. So I don't mind to go through this one if you'd like. This one is just a simple covenant lot creation for a secondary residential lot. They are asking for a waiver for a second driveway access, but there is two accesses that currently exist in the horseshoe driveway configuration. So I just recommended the standard findings and conditions that are typically attached to a secondary residential lot special permit.
Is, is the secondary lot right square in the middle of the horseshoe driveway?
It's in the front, so the the house, I believe, let me pull up the plan.
That's what it looks like.
So they may reconfigure the driveway access.
Yeah, the existing house is kind of too forward, so they have to figure it out.
So they'll have to figure out the access. I would assume they would shift this one over a little bit and keep one over here for the, this is the covenant lot up front. This is the market rate lot in the back.
Do we need any cleanup on any secondary cut permit stuff, or is this our set? This is?
No. Yeah, no, it's all part of it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Come on, guys. I want to beat Sarah.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, Barry.
That's okay. You're looking over something. That's fine. I was trying to give you some time. Is there, hey, Megan, do you, any concerns about Lake Equator? That area floods pretty, pretty badly, and I'm just wondering. pretty, pretty badly, and I'm just wondering if there's anything from a planning board perspective we should be looking at. I mean.
Not in connection. Yeah, not in connection with the special permit because it's not allowing for any more density than what would already be allowed by rights, so.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because I didn't want to lose the opportunity because that is, uh, again, just like, uh, like, like Dav Kim, it's a pretty dire situation that continues to recur out there, but otherwise I'm in favor of it. Um.
Um, let's hope this, we opened up the public hearing, right? Do we have anyone?
We do not.
Right.
Motion to close the public hearing. Oh, no, John's got his hands up.
No, that, you got it.
Motion close public hearing then.
Second.
Barry, Barry made the motion. John seconded. Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well.
To the mayor. John, you got, you can have this.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve, um, and with the uh, find, the two findings and the uh, five conditions, and also uh, to have staff work um, with the applicant for the realignment of the curb cuts.
Second.
Great. Motion made by John, seconded by Barry. John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. That could be, that could be the fastest one yet.
Megan, you're the winner so far.
Got it, Megan.
Um, we can, do we continue one fifty-six?
No, one fifty-six. The next four are all um, Dan Malloy. And they're all conversions of ARs that were approved last month. We continued Brewster.
Alright, great. We're on one fifty-six Cliff Road Nominee Trust and one fifty-eight Cliff Road Nominee Trust. Dan? No.
Uh, Dan Malloy's, uh, been a long night. I am going to try to pass four of these in a row faster than probably the last meeting. I'll be really quick. So the first one, one fifty-six, one fifty-eight Cliff. Uh, if you remember the last meeting, you approved a four-lot definitive plan, uh, with the intended use as a proof plan for the plan in front of you tonight, which is a three-lot rear lot subdivision plan. Uh, nothing special about it. It's exactly as presented to you at the last meeting with the three, three lots set up as rear lots. Uh, we have reviewed all the conditions proposed by the staff and the staff report, and we have no issues with any of those. And uh, that's it, unless you have questions.
Board?
Nothing.
Alright, let's uh, open up the public hearing. Have anyone in the public, Meg?
Nope.
Motion to close?
Second.
Alright, uh, I'm sorry. Motion made by?
So?
Joe? By Joe, seconded by Barry. Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I. I was just taken back. Last time I looked at the partic, the attendees list, there was like thirty people on it.
Mm-hmm.
We've bored them to tears. There's three left. Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Go ahead, Mr. Top.
Uh, approval based on the merits.
And I'll second.
Great. Uh, motion made by Joe, seconded by Barry. Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. It's unanimous. Okay, um.
That was less than two minutes. You win.
We're not done yet.
I know, but.
Um.
Roll.
So Rear Keeper LLC, or?
Oh. We have to.
We have to.
We have to A and R on this as well.
We have to do the A and R.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion at this point that we approve the A and R.
Second.
Great. Uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Okay, now we're on to Rear, Rear Keeper LLC ten Surfside Drive. Dan?
Alright, Dan Malloy, again, same presentation as the last application, a little bit easier. So at the last meeting, the board approved a two-lot definitive plan. Again, it's the intention is a proof plan for the two-lot rear subdivision plan in front of you tonight, and you saw a draft of this plan at the last hearing. Uh, this is the same plan that you saw at the last meeting, and I don't believe anyone had any questions or concerns at the last meeting. And we, again, we've reviewed the staff's recommendations for conditions and have no questions or concerns with those.
Okay, great. Uh, board? I see I have, uh, board's good. I have Stephen Cohen and attendees with his hands up. Megan? Hi, Steve.
Hi, I'm, I'm with Dan on this. I just wanted to be available.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Um, so.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing then, sir.
Okay.
Else.
Um, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Uh, for the merits, guys.
Joe, go ahead.
Oh, uh, motion to approve based on merits. Yes, Mr. Director, I'm on it, sir.
I know, I, yes, sir, I know you were, sir, and that's why I called upon you, sir, and you have served faithfully.
Taking my notes.
And on that, I will second that.
Great. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Barry. Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Um, and I as well. Um, on to the A and R.
Motion to approve the A and R submitted.
Second, second.
Motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Alrighty, um. Uh, Joe and Marcia Aguirre sixty-eight Fairgrounds Road, Dan Malloy.
Alright, we're on again, same presentation, sixty-eight Fairgrounds Road. The previous meeting, again, the board approved a two-lot definitive plan as a, again, proof plan for the proposed two-lot rear subdivision in front of you. And essentially the same two-lot rear lot in our plan you saw as a draft is before you tonight for approval was a special permit.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Board, John?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, it's not that we're taking these um, plans lightly. Obviously, we reviewed these at the last uh, meeting, and this is just for a comment for the general public, is anybody who's paid attention or future. Um, it, it makes sense with these rear lot subdivisions to have the proof to show that uh, they can legally be a subdivision and um, using this rear lot, what we're doing is we're altering it to make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and more functional, functional. So uh, it's just a, just brief description, um, but uh, I have no issue with this. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I get, it sounds like we're going fast, but, but we reviewed this at the last meeting. We've reviewed it again, so it makes sense. Um, uh, if there's no board questions, I'm gonna open it up to uh, the public.
Motion to close public hearing, sir?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by John. Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Uh, on to the A and R.
Uh, no, we have to go to the.
Oh, that was just a public hearing, all the merits.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve, um, with the findings and conditions.
I'll second.
Great. Motion made by John, uh, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
I'm an I as well.
And now I'll make a motion to approve the A and R.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Barry. John?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Great, um. Onto the last one.
Mm-hmm.
Yikes, um. P and R's Trucking Inc., MJ Way subdivision, ten Green Meadow Lane. Uh, Dan Malloy?
Okay, one more time. So again, last meeting, the board reviewed a two-lot definitive plan, uh, with the purpose of coming back before you tonight with a two-lot rear subdivision special permit in our plan. So the plan is in before you tonight. Again, it's the same draft plan you saw at the last meeting, the same two-lot subdivision. Uh, we've reviewed, again, reviewed all the staff comments, uh, conditions, no concerns with those. There is one open-ended condition there. I think I know that one of the butters had a concern with, and it wasn't surfed. The board wanted to take two minutes to talk about. Do a screening. Uh, on that question, I'm not sure how many, if anybody had a chance to go out there, but on that one side, uh, half of that side of the property line is already screened, uh, with vegetation, and the two areas that are partly open are already covered with a uh, six-foot board fence. Uh, so there are no, what I would call open direct view areas, other than where the fences.
Oh.
Uh, so the, really the question, this is whether or not with what's there with the vegetation, the fence, if, if people feel that's adequate, or if anybody thinks there's additional screenings needed near the fence.
Dan, I, I was there today, um, and so the Sandoli property is probably the one you're referring to with the fence and some.
Yes.
It, it's the property across that, that really is, is troubling to me, and I'm not sure who has that, um. So it is.
I can, I can actually answer that one quick, if it would save you. Uh, so the Sandoli is the property that spoke up at the last hearing. And I think the property you're talking about now is directly behind us.
Um, yeah, I mean, it, i- if you look.
Yeah, so.
It's Cindy Clarkson, and she has a sliding glass door and a porch, and if you jumped off that porch, you would almost land in, in the hole for the, in the foundation hole. So I, I just, if there's something the applicant could do to put up a fence and some.
I, I could even cover that quick. I don't want to interrupt you, but I know I've already talked to Miles Reese on that question, uh, because that's the exact open area. Uh, he has already worked with both of those butters, which is why you're not hearing comments from them tonight or at the other meeting. Uh, they've already reached an agreement to put some type of a fence up.
Okay.
I don't have that in writing, but I, I have that, you know. I'm, I'm very confident that discussion did take place, and that they've made, they've made an agreement privately to put a fence up.
Okay, so we could just add that in, in the decision and, and call it a night.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll take Miles on as well. I'll do that. Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank, thank you, Dan. Um, I'm gonna open this up to the public.
None.
I'm gonna close to public.
Second.
Uh, made by, motion made by Joe, seconded by Barry. Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Um. Onto the merits.
Do we want to add a condition just about the planting, just to be safe?
Uh, yeah, just about the fence and some screening, if we could.
Hundred and six. Agree to buy butters or something like that?
Yep.
By the applicant.
By the applicant, right?
I mean, every applicant and their butters, yeah. I'll second that motion.
Good. Uh. Joe made the motion?
I did, yeah.
You did.
I'm fading quickly, guys. Uh, Joe made the motion. Nat seconded. Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, um.
Motion to approve the A and R.
Okay. Give him that, give him that.
Time out. Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Perfect.
We got you. We're, we're dragging you over the threshold. Kick. Let's go.
You're in good hands.
To the finish line, guys. Take me to the finish line.
Yeah, so that's still my motion at this point is to approve the A and R submitted now.
I'll second.
Alright, ma, uh, Barry made the motion, Joe seconded Barry.
Aye.
Joe?
No, Nat did.
Nat?
No.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have.
Alright, goodnight, Dan. Thanks.
Alright.
Um. Like to open it up for public comment for items not listed on the agenda, if there's anyone attending?
No.
Alrighty. Next planning board meeting is Monday, August fourteenth. I would entertain them. Megan, she, she looks too anxious to pack. Maybe we should, there's something we should do.
Not talking, low traffic?
Yeah.
Plan checks. I'm sorry, we don't see a walking way to the roller.
Is anyone gonna move to adjourn?
Oh, no, no, no.
We like worm.
Now, Megan, have fun on your trip. Oh, thanks. I will not have fun while you're gone.
You don't drive, Megan. Do not attempt to drive over there.
There you go.
I'll drive. I'm telling you, John. Easy. No. It's easy.
Better after a couple Guinnesses, too.
Yeah. And, and not driving rotaries, you'll get really good at it. They're amazing. They function extremely well. Need, we, no, Joe, we need her back. Okay, that is dangerous. Dangerous.
Uh, you know, you still got her hanging here, so I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Barry.
Oh.
No one's gonna second it.
I'll just second it.
I just want to point out that Nat keeps on telling us how great rotaries are, but now we say, oh, don't drive in the.
No, no, no. Yeah, but you're driving on the wrong side, babe. It's a lot different, and they're very fast.
Made by Barry, seconded by John. Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Enjoy, Megan.
Enjoy, guys. You're out of here tomorrow.
I'll, I'll miss you guys.
Like we're sending a kid off to school or something.
You know, while you're over there, we can conduct a special Zoom meeting if you miss us.
Yeah.
Oh, that's so thoughtful.
Imagine this, it would start at eleven and you'd get out at five in the morning.
There you go. That would be a no, I take it.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Alright.
Done.